Father, why don't you lead us in prayer this morning, okay? Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for your provident care for us and for our city. We ask that you guide the deliberations of this council, that they may rule with justice and wisdom. We ask that you continue to bless our city and all that we do for it. We ask this in faith. Amen. Y'all want to come help me do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I, Alvin New, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
They're doing pretty good on harmony, so I'm gonna get them to sing the Star Spangled Banner now. Alright, let me see what I've got here. That's perfect timing. Why don't y'all just hang out here with me? Do you have anyone else that's coming up with you, or are you handling it? You're handling it? I should've known. Okay. Let's talk about a proclamation then. This is a group of young scholars who recently won an award or won a gold medal at a presentation, and this is called the Texas Research Institute of Young Scholars. It's a really neat program that they do through the San Angelo Independent School District. I've been involved in it as a parent and so forth for some years now. And these kids take on a project, do the research, then do a presentation on that project. And this group has taken on texting and driving. And part of our support for them is to put a proclamation together for them and to support their efforts. And so they'll tell you the rest of their story, but the proclamation. Whereas, no text is worth dying for. And whereas, the purpose of the Arrive Alive campaign focuses heavily on education, adding fuel to our efforts to reverse this growing road safety problem. And whereas, it's important that every driver understand the risks of such a dangerous behind-the-wheel activity. And we especially need to reach the newest generation of driver, who are the most prolific texters with real solutions. And whereas, with texting drivers 23 times more likely to be in an accident, we must change attitudes, shift behaviors, and save lives. And whereas, in order to make a sustained change, everyone must do his or her part to put an end to texting and driving. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Arrive Alive, Don't Text and Drive Awareness Month. Now, why March in our rearview mirror? That's when they did their presentation. This is the first time we could get them up here to get this proclamation read. So, "In San Angelo, Texas, we urge all citizens to take part in the spirit of this and pledge to never again text from behind the wheel of a moving vehicle." Are y'all ready to present?
Yes.
Do you want to get a picture with this? Come up here, we'll get that behind us. You step up around here?
Yes.
Okay, and you come right over here. Yeah, it's a pleasure to be here. You want to get everybody?
Yes, sir. All right.
Will you hold this one?
One, two, three.
Well, thank you City Council and Mayor Alvin New and City Manager for watching our presentation on texting while driving.
We are the Arrive Alive, Don't Text and Drive Try's Group.
I'm Hannah Brown.
I'm Drew Eisenbach.
I'm Holly Esposito.
I'm Brad Martinez.
I'm Emily Montoya.
Global issue: Texting while driving is one of the leading causes of automobile-related accidents, which often lead to injury or death.
Hypothesis: If drivers would refrain from texting while driving, then fewer accidents would occur because they would not be distracted and would be focused on the road.
Facts on texting while driving: Five seconds is the average time that a driver's eyes are off the road while texting. When you are traveling at 55 miles per hour, that is enough time to cover the length of a football field. Thirty-four percent of teenagers who text while driving say they use to multitasking.
Brain power normally used to concentrate on driving safely decreases by 40% when you are texting. You are 23 more times likely to get in a car accident while texting.
Thirty-nine out of the 50 states have already banned texting while driving. The age group with the greatest proportion of distracted drivers is the under-20.
Thirty-four percent of teenagers think nothing bad will happen to them if they are texting while driving. Distracted driving is the number-one killer of American teenagers.
One hundred thousand crashes a year involve people who are texting while driving. Seventy-seven percent of teens say that they've seen their parents texting while driving.
Reaction time decreases by 35% when you are texting while driving. According to studies conducted by Virginia Tech University and Car and Driver Magazine, texting while driving is more dangerous than driving while intoxicated.
Seeing for ourselves, while we were each out with our parents, we decided to take count all the drivers we saw texting. We had a combined total of 73 people. That is 73 potential wrecks, 73 potential deaths.
Plan of action: School level. What we did for school level is class surveys, pledge-for-life contracts, parent pledges, carpool posters, morning show video, test simulator, and edgy fare giddy bags.
City level: Petition, teenage survey, and Awareness Week proposal to Mayor Alvin New.
State level: We spoke with State Representative Drew Darby, Secretary, and State Representative Tom Craddock's staff. We presented our project to State Representative Drew Darby, and we submitted our petition to former State Speaker of the House, Representative Tom Craddock.
School level: We reached out to our peers and parents by creating a poster message that spelled out, "Please don't text while driving." We each held up a poster by the carpool area where parents pick up their kids every day.
Classroom surveys before and after the pledge. Before the pledge, over 50% of students have seen their parents texting while driving. Seventy-five percent of students say that their parents texted stoplights. Fifty percent of students say they have said something to their parents about it before, and over 90% of students still think that it's dangerous.
After the pledge, only 10% of students said that they've seen their parents texting while driving. Three out of four parents continue to text at stoplights. Twenty percent of students still have to say things to their parents, and over 90% still think that it's dangerous to text while driving.
Classroom survey graph. As you can see by the graph, there is a significant decrease in the parents texting while driving after they sign the pledge.
This is the pledge that we sent home for parents to sign. One hundred one adults took the pledge.
Edgy fare testing. Here are a few pictures that we took while testing the students and adults at the Fort Concho Edgy Fair. We tallied how many times they swerved, went off the road, hit other vehicles, spun out, or hit the wall during a control test and a texting while driving test put on by a Mario Kart Wii Racing game. Our experiment was based on the Virginia Tech study.
These are the results after the student simulation test. As you can see by the graph, they were more hazardous texting while driving.
Adult texting while driving simulation test. By the graph, you can see a big difference in the adult's ability to operate a vehicle while being distracted by texting, and they proved to themselves and others on the road how dangerous they are.
Teen survey results. We took a survey on 20 local teenagers. Eighty percent of them said that they text while driving. Seventy percent of them said that they would quit if it was against the law. And 35% of them said that they have nearly been in a car accident because of texting while driving.
Mayor Alvin New meeting. We submitted a proposal to Mayor Alvin New in hopes of establishing a local No Texting While Driving Awareness Week. Instead of a week, the whole month of April was then declared as Awareness Month, as Arrive Alive Month for the City of San Angelo.
Here's a map of the United States, and there are 39 out of the 50 states that have texting while driving bans.
Trip to the Capitol. Here are some pictures that we took when we went to speak with State Representative Drew Darby and Tom Craddock's staff.
Support of legislation. We first met with State Representative Drew Darby's local secretary, Cheryl D. Cordova, to speak to her about what we could do to help pass the bill. She also invited us to the state capitol to speak with Representative Drew Darby.
Then, we wrote up a petition for others to sign here locally in support of the bill. We got 224 signatures, including Drew Darby's.
On February 18th, we went to the capitol in Austin to speak to Drew Darby. Also, we presented our petition to former Speaker of the House, Craddock's Chief of Staff. Representative Craddock included our petition when he presented it to the Committee on Transportation.
How you can make a difference. Encourage you to sign the Pledge for Life Contract, which states when they are 16 years of age, they will pledge not to text while driving. Support the Alex Brown Bill. Alex Brown is a teenager who was killed due to texting while driving and ejected out of her vehicle because she was not wearing a seatbelt. Therefore, Tom Craddock has named the bill in her memory.
Tips for changing: Pull over to use your phone. Download a Drive Mode app, which automatically sends a message out that you are driving. Or turn off your phone or store it somewhere that you cannot reach it.
Mentors: Mayor Alvin New.
Mark Speed with AT&amp;T.
State Representative Drew Darby.
Drew Darby's local secretary, Cheryl D. Cordova.
Legislative aide Victoria Messer.
Chief of Staff Jason Maudlin.
Former Speaker of the House, State Representative Tom Craddock.
Chief of Staff Kate Huddleston.
David Hooks.
And Jennifer Brown.
Conclusion: As we have proven with our surveys and studies, texting while driving is a dangerous habit many drivers have developed. We set out to raise awareness and support legislation prohibiting texting while driving, and we believe that we accomplished these goals.
Here are some of the resources we used throughout our research. We would like to end our presentation with a motto that encouraged us.
I am only one, but I am one. I cannot do everything, but I can do something. And what I can do, I ought to do. And what I ought to do, by the grace of God, I shall do.
By Edward Everett Hale.
Thank you for taking the time to watch our presentation on texting while driving. Together, we can make a difference and make our roads safer for us all.
In memory of...
I do have one. Of the 101 adults that took the pledge, was one of them Dr. Carol Ann Bonds, do you know? I just had to ask. Thank you so much.
Good job.
So as you see, the future is bright, and the program is worthwhile, and we wish y'all well as you continue to compete, okay? Congratulations on your gold medal, and look forward to great things from you, okay? Thanks. I didn't see Dolores. Dolores, are you here today? There you go. Come on, we've got a fairly good group, so I'm not seeing everybody today. Next, we have the National Service Recognition Day, April 9, 2013. This is being accepted today by Dolores Schwartner, who's our Concho Valley RSVP Director, Sylvia Nombrano, our Senior Companion Director, and Lindsay Elliott, our Foster Grandparent Director. A proclamation. Whereas, service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet challenges. And whereas, the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas, AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas, San Angelo has all three SeniorCorps programs: Concho Valley RSVP, Foster Grandparent Program, and Senior Companion Program, whose volunteers meet local community needs on a daily basis. And whereas, national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas, national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas, national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas, AmeriCorps members and SeniorCorps members, volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intense commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 9, 2013. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 9, 2013 as National Service Recognition Day. Dolores. Your bet.
Well, good morning, everyone. Mayor New, City Council members. National service is really important in the communities across the United States, and this is one way of recognizing it and showing the importance. And the mayor mentioned that it is a community partnership along with the federal government. While we're funded federally, all these programs have a local sponsor. RSVP, which has volunteers 55 and older doing all types of community work in almost every nonprofit in the community and some across the Concho Valley. Senior companions and foster grandparents, sponsored by the Council of Governments. Senior companions support independent living, and foster grandparents support children in the schools. And so, we're always looking for more volunteers. The statement that the girls had at the end of theirs, "If you're only one, we always need one more, and one more, and one more." And so, if you're 55 and older and wish to do volunteer work in the community, come see us, because we work with a lot of different programs, both citywide and for nonprofits. And we appreciate the support that we get here in San Angelo. Thank y'all.
Next, I'd like to invite Marie Aguilar, and Kevin Little, and Cal Hurley, and Bertha Trevino, who else? Gosh, there's a whole group of you folks from the National Public Health Week. James Flores, Gloria Hale, Julie Vraina. There you go. Hi, James.
Hi.
Where's the bystanders? All are the uninnocent bystanders. Okay. Is uninnocent? Let's go through that right quick. We might need an English teacher to see if I can even say that. A proclamation. Whereas, the week of April 1 through the 7, 2013, is a National Public Health Week, and the theme is Public Health is Return on Investment: Save Lives, Save Money. And whereas, the San Angelo Tom Green County Health Department and Family Support Services Department has educated the public, policymakers, and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. And whereas, preventing diseases before they start is critical to helping people live longer, healthier lives while managing health-related costs. And whereas, investing just $10 per person each year is proven, in proven, community-based public health efforts could save the nation more than $16 billion within five years. And whereas, vaccines are one of the most cost-effective public health interventions. And whereas, infants who receive the seven vaccines given as part of the routine childhood immunization schedule, society saves 9.9 million in direct healthcare costs, 3,000 lives are saved, and 14 million cases of disease are prevented. And whereas, preterm births cost the U.S. over $26 billion a year, with average first-year medical costs for a premature or low-birth weight baby of $40,000 compared to $4,500 for a baby born without complications. Whereas, a pregnant woman may participate in WIC for approximately $743 a year, with an average participation length of 13 months. And whereas, research has also shown that breastfed infants may have a reduced risk for childhood obesity. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 1 through the 7, National Public Health Week in San Angelo, Texas, and urge all citizens to support this charitable effort.
Good morning. On behalf of Code Compliance, Nursing, WIC, Health, Animal Services, we thank y'all for this recognition, and we thank you for letting us be an integral part of everyday society. I think these four or five departments here deal with the citizenry probably more so than a lot of others, so we applaud that, y'all recognizing us and thanking y'all for letting us be a part of you guys' community.
Julie? Do I have, Mr. Minister, do I have three different ones that are slightly different? Two? Let me see. A proclamation. Whereas, the City of San Angelo Animal Shelter took in 10,113... Yeah, you bet. You bet. Thanks. I appreciate you, Sandra. Hi, y'all. How are you? Good. Here we go. This is an Animal Services and Tom Green County Sheriff's Office and Trustee Program Appreciation Day, April 2, to be accepted by Julie Vraina, our Animal Services Manager, and... Jeremy?
No, Jeremy's actually working the crew.
Oh, see, I've got two names here, and neither one fit the two folks. So...
Todd Allen and Beth Mull.
Alright. Todd Allen and Beth Mull from the Sheriff's Department. Outstanding.
Our chief is here, too.
Okay.
Chief Deputy Dell Pierce.
Hi. So we have also Chief Deputy Dell Pierce in attendance. Okay, let me read this proclamation then. The proclamation. How am I doing now, Sandra? How's it going? Whereas, the City of San Angelo Animal Shelter took in 10,113 abandoned and unwanted animals in 2012. And whereas, the irresponsibility of pet owners has resulted in animals running loose and unsupervised, causing a threat to public health and safety. And whereas, indiscriminate breeding allowed by irresponsible pet owners who have not had their pets spayed or neutered has contributed to pet overpopulation. And whereas, the overpopulation of unwanted and homeless animals continues to place a heavy burden on shelter staff when the shelter is the only open-admission shelter in San Angelo, Tom Green County, and the surrounding counties that never turns away any animal for any reason, even if there is a lack of available space. And whereas, animal control officers and shelter staff must respond to these community problems and crises. And whereas, shelter staff deal with the stressful and emotional task of caring daily for abused, neglected, and unwanted pets, only to see their love and care too often end with only some of these animals finding good homes. And whereas, the work of animal shelters and the important services they provide often go unnoticed and underappreciated by the citizen. And whereas, animal shelters act as safe havens for homeless and abused, abandoned, and unwanted animals, providing them with comfort and care as space permits. And whereas, in partnership with the City of San Angelo Animal Shelter, the Tom Green County Sheriff's Office, through the trustee program, provides the animal shelter with county trustees. And whereas, the jailer in charge and trustees that volunteer for the program clean kennels, provide food and water to shelter animals, and clean other shelter general areas daily, thereby enhancing the appearance of the shelter and helping maintain a certain level of health and safety of the animals. And whereas, the animal shelter receives their annual inspection and passed their inspection with favorable comments by the Department of State Health Services Zoanosis... Why did y'all do that to me? Zoanosis? Okay. Branch during a surprise visit on February 8, 2013. And whereas, the inspector was pleased by the positive changes made within the last two years. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby designate April 2, 2013, the City of San Angelo Animal Shelter, Tom Green County Sheriff's Office, and Trustee Appreciation Day.
I would like to say thank you to the Joe Captain and the sheriff and everybody for allowing us to continue this contract with the inmate program. The inmates do a great job. They're there every day, and they help us clean kennels, feed animals, and they're part of our vital, everyday function. So, just want to give them a round of applause and say thank you very much.
Can y'all sneak by? Coming up, Father? I'm joined today by Father Rodney White, who's here representing Bishop Michael Pfeiffer, and we have a proclamation concerning a special time of prayer for rain. Proclamation. Whereas, there is an urgent need for rain in San Angelo and the surrounding areas of West Texas. And whereas, we know that by placing our confidence in Christ, who told us to ask for every good gift, and that when we ask in His name, it will be granted. And whereas, we ask our kind and loving Heavenly Father and Creator to bless us with special gift of this much-needed rain to fill our lakes, streams, reservoirs, and aquifers. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby declare Sunday, April 14, as a special time of prayer for rain, and would invite all people to join in prayer on this day in their churches and in their homes for this beautiful and heavenly gift, so our humble and heartfelt request may be granted through the power of the Holy Spirit. Father?
On behalf of Bishop Pfeiffer, we thank the mayor and the city council for this proclamation, and especially Bishop has... and especially Bishop has asked 30 communities throughout the area of West Texas to offer such a proclamation as well, so that we, together, all people of faith in West Texas, can pray together for rain. And so, for that, we thank you.
And also, today, I have a recognition for Rex Rogers. How are you?
Good.
Rex won a contest suggesting the name for the rebranding of the city's government access channel. So, Channel 17 became SATV. The City of San Angelo's government access channel on the Southern Link Cable System is SATV. We air meetings of the City Council, other boards and commissions, the city interview show, employee spotlights, nature center shows, city-related public service announcements, and other original programming related to San Angelo's municipal government. At this time, I'd like to recognize Rex for winning the contest and for his contribution. We have a certificate here, "You Make the Difference," commending Rex Rogers, contest winner for branding the City of San Angelo's Government Access Channel, SATV. Thanks, Rex.
Are you gonna put the picture on SATV?
Mayor, I do have to ask, how long it took Rex to come up with that name? How long did it take you?
Well, I can tell you that you do get a little bit of a sense of the fact that SATV, something nice and short and sweet, fits the character of a gentleman who doesn't want to speak, right? So-- I know y'all think we need a break, but we don't. The public-- at this time, we take public comment. The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or on the consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda, or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. Council?
Yes.
Four?
I have two and six.
Two, four, and six. Okay? I have items off of the consent agenda being moved to the regular agenda. That's correct, right?
I think she said just two and six.
I said four.
But he said four.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said--
Sorry. So, but it is from the consent agenda to the regular agenda is what we're asking for. Okay. Okay. May I get a motion concerning the consent agenda, recognizing items two, four, and six, please?
Motion to approve consent agenda excluding items two, four, and six.
Second.
Okay. Let's call for the vote on that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'll start the meeting with item number two after I do public comments.
Okay. Have public comment.
You want to speak first?
Fine. I just wanted to let you know that I had a public comment.
Okay. Do we have public comment from the audience? How are you?
Good morning. Jim Ryan. I thought about holding this until item number nine, because it is related, but it's a little different. Something that came to my attention, and I think we've given a heads-up to a lot of people, we're anticipating a considerable bump in hotel occupancy tax due to the incoming people working the Klein Shale. Something that has come up in southeast Texas with the Eagle Shale, the state gives a 30-day exemption on hotel occupancy tax. In other words, if someone moves into a hotel, starts using it residentially, and stays there 30 days or longer, they no longer pay occupancy tax. Now, there's not a great deal that we, as a city, can do about this. It is being addressed at the legislative level. There's HB 56, which would undo this exemption, and I understand that Mr. Darby's on it. But I would suggest that we might want to coordinate with Mr. Darby. Perhaps a resolution would be helpful to his cause. I know it's being worked on down there, but one thing they've found out in the Eagle Shale, the Economic Development Institute at UT has discovered that 77% of the hotels down there have as much as 90% of their rooms now exempt from hotel occupancy tax, which is really hurting those communities, because they're no longer receiving any money. So we might want to coordinate with Mr. Darby and see if we can help push this through.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other public comment? Comment from council?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to clarify something, and if I'm wrong, then somebody pleased to let me know. The article about the trash pickup people on Good Friday that stopped a truck in the middle of the street to help a child retrieve a ball out from under a car. It's a good citizen thing to do. There were a few write-ups in the paper thanking the city for this employee to stop that truck and assist a child who could have been hurt or killed. I just wanted to clarify, it's not the city's employee. That employee is Republic Trash Company that contracts with the city, and I didn't want the city to take credit when it was another entity, their employee, who did the good deed on Good Friday.
Outstanding. Other public comment or comment from council? Okay. Let me move us forward then. This is item number two. No, let's see. Hang on just a moment.
But it was a nice walk.
It's part of our wellness program, Mr. Dixon. Items two, four, and six have been moved to the regular agenda, and so we'll start that meeting, but after we do this concurrent meeting with the Planning Commission. So, that's what I was working on. At this time, what I'd like to do is open a session and call to order a special meeting, where we have a concurrent meeting with the Planning Commission. So if you folks would come join us up here at these tables, then we can work together Okay. Standard process would be for me to open the session as part of the City Council and ask for the chair to open the session for the Planning Commission, okay? And then, we'll let Ms. Fawver make any initial comments, and then we'll work together. Okay? So, I'm declaring this meeting come to order for the City Council, and welcome the Planning Commission. And the chair for the Planning Commission, please go ahead and open the meeting for your group.
Okay. Hey, Jay, what's the procedure for us to open the meeting?
We'll just start the quorum.
Okay. We have a quorum, and I declare this meeting open for the Planning Commission of the City of San Angelo, Texas.
Ms. Fawver?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us outside of your usual meeting date. Staff will be here throughout the discussion this morning to answer any questions that you might have. I know that the Planning Commission had asked us to set up this joint session with the council to try to get some guidance from you as a group, to try to have some open discussion about expectations, and to try to frame this entire discussion before the work really gets underway at the Planning Commission level. And so, I'll let Mr. Lawrence perhaps lead the discussion of what is expected and being requested from you all, and myself and Mr. Hints from our Planning Division are here to provide you with some guidance, some feedback, and answer any questions as necessary. But I really think we're looking for the Planning Commission to obtain some guidance from you all as a group.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, how about an introduction of each of your members, just real quick?
Yes, we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Bill Lawrence. I'm the current chairman of the Planning Commission. I work out at Goodyear in the Financial Department. Doris?
Darlene Jones. I represent Bogus Press.
Okay.
Bill Webb.
Okay.
Joseph Grimes, Vice Chairman, Planning Commission. I'm Joston Communications.
Ryan Smith. Okay. Very good. And specifically, I know that you wanted to spend some energy on things like the recreational vehicle guidelines, and I think fairly quickly, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Valenzuela, so he can walk you through what that housing group has been working on, and then just let a conversation take place from there. But also, let me understand if there's something else specifically you want to make sure council helps give guidance on.
Well, in particular, we want to understand what our timing requirements are. We are actually already working, and we have directed staff to come up with a coherent plan going forward for the type of temporary uses that we're addressing here. We have-- our current ordinance actually handles this quite well, but it does that by simply not allowing it, the way we're interpreting it. So, we're working towards finding out where the community is as far as locating these uses, whether the community wants to exclude these uses, or what variation on this is. And to that, you have access to information that we don't have. You hear-- we have the information that is brought to us at the meetings, but we were hoping that you would share with us what you've been hearing, and how you feel about this issue, so as we direct staff to go forward to construct something, a solution for this, that we would be better informed.
Right. Definitely, we need to be in concert a little bit on this issue, and so we appreciate you being here and asking for this. And at the council meeting last, two weeks ago, we did give some guidance to this housing committee that's been brought together to work with you, to walk through some fact-finding. So, for instance, what do they do in South Texas with snowbirds? Okay? Who are, under our ordinance, wouldn't be allowed to be there for three or four months, or five months at a time, and so forth. And should we make any changes? And then also, we've asked that that group look into and vet some of the ideas and processes that might be in place in other places that are affected by an oil-filled activity level. So, Midland Odessa, or Crystal City, Carizo Springs, or someplace in North Dakota, or, you know, those kinds of things. And so, that we would be able to get this group to do some work for you, and then start vetting with you the different ideas that could make sense, and whether or not we want to change our ordinance, and make any changes to what someone can or cannot do. It seems to be council, and of course, everyone here will voice their thoughts in just a second, but seems to be council's direction that recreational vehicles are supposed to be temporary in their nature, not become a permanent house. So, but so with that, let me turn it to Mr. Valenzuela, and let me turn it to each one of the council members, and then back to you for individual comment. Okay?
I'll just kind of add to what the mayor just said. We do have the City of San Angelo Housing Committee that's been established to address concerns as far as housing, the growth, future growth. And we've had a couple of good meetings. We have-- it's a 26-member committee, and at this point, what we've done is to make sure that we decided, in looking forward, you know, what would be the priorities that we're gonna be addressing. Three of the priorities that came up were for the single housing, for multi-housing, and of course, the big one for you guys that you're most concerned about is the temporary housing, and how we're gonna address that. What we've done is established subcommittees to address, as the mayor mentioned a while ago, to kind of do the research and address each one of those priorities. Each committee will address one-- for example, one committee will address the single-family, one the multifamily will have one specifically that's gonna address the temporary housing. That is really the area where I'd love to be able to get the participation, of course, of your board, to make sure that we're on the kind of the same page, any concerns that you might have, that we are addressing that. Now, these meetings are-- as far as the meetings will be held this week also, starting tomorrow afternoon, culminating to Friday, we'll be having meetings with the three different subcommittees. And on Friday, being the day that we address, of course, the temporary housing. What we want to do--
And the time and place on Friday?
Yeah, the time is gonna be at this-- the time and place, of course, will be at City Hall on the second floor. The meeting starts at 3:00, and it ends at 5:00. You're more than welcome, of course, to join for-- to be there for each of the committee meetings. But in particular, where I would love to be able to have you there, or at least representation, is for the temporary housing. And that way, again, you'll get a good feel for what we're looking at, what the stakeholders of that committee are looking at also. Of course, we always address anything as far as growth in our communities with smart growth. We want to make sure that we are placing, especially in temporary housing, the areas that best fits our community also. And I know that's a challenge that you're faced with at this point, and that's where you wanted to get the input from the City Council members. Again, this week, we'll be able to get the input from the committee members, the subcommittee members, on temporary housing, and what they feel would be a good fit. And this is actually gonna be a planning process that's actually gonna establish action steps, performance measurements, in order for us to be able to measure what we're doing in the plans that we're setting forth. So again, that is something that is in the works, and this week is when we actually get a lot of the planning done, the action steps done this week. After this meeting, what I'd love to be able to do is, of course, see whom you would like to dedicate, or if all of you would like to participate, that'd be wonderful. If not, representation, a couple of members would be great also for the Temporary Housing Committee. But anyway, it is in the works at this point. I think we'll have a lot more clarity after that meeting. We'll have a better idea of exactly what it is that we're looking at, action step-wise also.
Okay. Let me ask and let council members come in here and make any comments they want to, and then I'll turn it to you and your board, okay, sir? Anything you'd like to say, folks? Mr. Morrison?
I would just like to state, and this is my opinion on this, but I feel that RV parks that serve temporary residents are very important to our community, and we need to take care of them, because we have all the many different things, and we want vacationers to come in. We need a place to put them, a good, clean place where they can stay. And RV parks, and these long-term living parks, in my mind, are two separate animals. They're two separate identities. And we need to deal with these separately. We need the RV parks, and we need to deal with them, and we already have rules that govern them, where they say that they cannot stay-- people cannot stay in these parks over 30 days. But we need specific rules to govern the permanent living parks where people stay over 30 days. And my suggestion has always been, from the beginning on this, is that we've got an industrial park sitting out on the edge of town that's been there for 30 years, and this would be a perfect place for public-private partnerships to put these permanent living parks in the industrial camp. That way, they'll all be together. The city can make a little money off of this to take care of us when the boom is over. And also, we'd be able to police them differently than we do the RV parks. So that's my suggestion.
So very specific geography is an important part on the long term?
Yes, sir. I think they need to be together. I think they need to be, because you've got an entirely different set of opportunities that come at these permanent living parks that you do not have with the RV parks.
But so then, the RV parks with temporary-- and I'm just making sure I heard what you said.
Yes, sir.
But the RV parks-- But the RV parks for vacationers would have more geographic opportunity, but a lot more strict stay requirements. And then the long-term type of environment would have geographic specificity. Maybe places where they belong.
Because we already have the 30-day notice in place for the, we already govern those. We've never had any problems with them. They've worked well and we need them. But this is a different type of deal that we're working with here. Yes, I would put them in a geographic location. Yes, sir.
Thanks so much. Anyone else? Mr. Silva?
The only thing I wanted to add is, I certainly don't want to copycat what other communities are doing. And I know you mentioned a lot of communities down in South Texas, but I'm interested to see what AJ or her staff have done or even the Planning Commission have done to see what the Midland, Odessas are doing wrong. So, and that's one thing I don't want to fall, us to fall into. We took a trip to Midland here a couple, three weeks ago and we saw some of those so-called, and I don't even want to call them man camps. Somebody was offended by them being called man camps. But it was a blighted area that I saw and said, "Man, I hope we never get to that." So my question is, and I'm very much interested to see what AJ and her staff are doing to investigate, to educate themselves on what-
What this group is doing.
Okay, on what not to do that's being done.
Well, I mean, are you wanting Ms. Favre to respond to you now, Mr. Silva?
Sure, I mean, that's part of the, yeah.
Well, to answer your question, Mr. Silva, we're still, of course, very much in the discovery-
Can somebody in the back turn up the mic because we can barely hear you?
I've never been accused of that, but it does not sound like it's very loud, does it?
There it is.
That's a little better. We are still, of course, very much in the discovery phase of finding information, but we have worked with our commission very closely. And at the last two meetings, we've had some discussions and put together some research that they've asked us to do. So we've looked at, number one, looking at answering the question of, are these RV parks generally within the city limits or are they usually encumbered by the county? And we've found that the majority, the vast majority of them, tend to be outside city limit areas. That's not to give any direction as to how we do these. That's simply an observation based on the studies that we've done. We've also looked at, I believe, 14 different cities trying to, and we're still trying to get some information out of those cities, looking at various aspects of their ordinance, getting some advice from them on what they have seen as unintended consequences of the ways that they've regulated things, sort of what not to do as much as what to do. We've also made contact with some cities even out of state that have seen these populations spring up very quickly in their communities and reached out to them and are still in the process of trying to get some information from them as to what to expect, what not to do. And then the Planning Commission had a very detailed discussion of looking at different aspects of the ordinance, taking the ordinance or what an ordinance could be made out of into various parts and examining individual pieces of that, such as length of stay, such as what zoning districts might be important, such as the question of would we rather handle this as we currently do with campgrounds and recreational vehicle parks for the vacation type of purpose through a special use process that would allow both commissions to see every case and place conditions on it? Or would there be more of a comfort level to allow it by ride in certain zoning districts? So these are the sorts of information that we have been pulling together for them. And we can certainly provide all of you with what we have so far, as we have with the Planning Commission. We'll be happy to send that out to you and let you sort of peruse it at your leisure, if you'd like to do that. And if you have additional areas that you feel strongly that we should look into, certain aspects of an ordinance that you're particularly interested in, we will add that to the list of what we were trying to obtain. So that's a very short overview, but-
I do want to add, of course, that that's something that, as far as our committees will be looking at also. And we don't want to do double the work either because I know there's a lot of work that AJ and her staff will be doing, but this is all that's going to be incorporated also with the planning and the subcommittees. One thing that Mr. Dane and I discussed last week also was just making sure that we have each one of our members contacted counterparts, for example, in Odessa, Midland, and actually spend some time with them. Go down there, take your notes, make sure that, again, one of the things that Mr. Silva just mentioned a while ago is we don't want to repeat what was done incorrectly in those communities. So that's something, of course, that we'll be expediting, making sure that we address.
Further, Mr. Silva?
That's a good start. I am curious, I guess my appointee to the planning, is he missing? Or who is missing?
We had a Commissioner Jennifer Boggs that recently resigned and she's not had an appointment made yet. So we are one member short.
Well, I think I've recently assigned a member who may not have made it to the first meeting.
You did, we just did her orientation yesterday. So this is pretty intimidating for a first meeting, but she will be joining us immediately and getting into the swing of things.
That gives you the two that are not here? Okay. Other council members with anything to say? Ms. Farmer?
I'm not against growth and I'm not against our city adding to its population people by any means. I don't have anything against the oil field or the workers or anything like that, but I do strongly believe that we shouldn't allow these in the city limits for a number of reasons, which I have stated when I appeared before the Planning Commission in the very beginning and suggested, I was the one who suggested the city farm, the industrial center out there, to have them all in one location, which is easier to police for a lot of reasons. We don't have-
Ms. Farmer, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are you parsing, I'm trying to make sure I'm hearing this correctly too and that they are. Are you parsing the vacationer and the-
Different.
And the long-term again? So you're not saying that an RV park for a vacationer wouldn't be allowed in the city limits, but you are saying that something with a more long-term implication should not be?
No, I don't want them in the city limits, period.
When you said "these," you're talking about both?
That's what I'm trying to do, is make sure you're talking about RV parks.
RV parks, temporary housing, RV parks that are already in San Angelo by whatever reason, special permit or use, I don't want any more in the city limits for the various reasons that I've stated.
Yeah, whether it's an RV park or a long-term-
Right.
That's what I was asking.
We have plenty of stuff that's just on the outskirts, you know, around town that a private business could build and do, but it's not in the city limits. It's too hard to police these parks. I've seen what goes on, whether it's a vacation because of my husband's business and we stayed in RV parks and pulled our RV and it's not something that, I think, the uniqueness of our city. We have a very, very unique, beautiful city. And people have asked me, "Please, don't distort, make us look like a Midland, Odessa, or Big Lake." They're very adamant that they do not want to look like a boom town. However, it's here, we have to deal with it. And I do believe that the parks should have, RV parks should have a list of what requirements it is to do in bid because we've got the planned unit development and special use that someone could come in. And we need to have in place a written set of guidelines governing just RVs, but not, don't want them in the city limits.
Okay, thank you. Other comment from council?
I'm just curious, you know, after those comments, you've got the Campgrounds of America. I mean, are they having policing problems out there? I've never heard of, I'm just trying to get the gist of it. I mean, if it's policing that's a problem, then I want to know what's going, how many campground, RV campgrounds do we have in the city limits right now? The only one I know of is the Campgrounds of the KOA. Is there any other place anywhere?
On the Bryant, South Bryant, the one that we approved as a planned unit development. That one is there on the Bryant, just past the river.
Have you heard of, I mean, trouble out there or?
No, I have been in cities, Midland, Odessa, with my husband at these parks and seen the activities that go on. We don't have them in San Angelo with the exception of the campground, KOA campground out there.
And Spring Creek Marina would be there.
One at the lake.
Spring Creek Marina.
Yes, Spring Creek Marina. And that one is policed strongly by the owners of the Spring Creek Marina. They're very, very tough and they have a time limit that you can stay.
I just wanted to mention to you for clarification's sake, remember that your ordinance also does allow a certain percentage of the units in manufactured home parks to be RVs currently under the law. It's 30%. Correct, so just to throw that out there.
Sudden Lake Estates, is it still out there by Paul Ann? It's a mobile home park for RVs and stuff. That met opposition several years ago with citizens. They did not want it in the city limits and it was placed about as far out as it could be.
Okay. Other council members? Mr. Hersfeld?
I guess I would say that parsing it out between the traditional RV parks and the temporary housing developments, I don't have a problem with the traditional RV parks. I mean, I think that's a good thing for, I've traveled around and I've stayed in them, so. But the thing that concerns me though is that if we take the other aspect and say that we can't have temporary housing developments, then, you know, I want to be careful that we don't start allowing a ton of these things to come in and people, and things changing with technicalities. Them passing things with, you know, they pick up and move and they simply move it by two feet, you know, after 29 days, you know? That, you've got to be careful that there's, that we enforce things in a proper manner. So with, but with that said, I mean, I'm not, I don't have a problem with traditional RV parks. I'm not in favor of temporary housing developments inside the city limits. And I think using, and I'm sorry, using the industrial park out there is not a good use of city funds. And I personally think that that needs to be a private development for private individuals to do that, to manage it, to own it, to operate it. I don't think the city needs to be in that business. In the event that there's nothing available and no one can build them and it has to happen, okay, then we might consider, but really, that needs to be a many, many steps down the line. I really think that needs to be a private sector activity to develop those things.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Hersfeld? The housing that we did for Goodfellow out there across from the base, the city bought the land for it to be a private development by a person coming in. So you wouldn't want a private individual to, if the land was offered by the city all in one place out at the city farm, you see that as different?
Well, number one, I mean, we're talking about, that's a development primarily for the military establishment and I would support something like that. And there's a fine line, I think, as far as where we can and should go. I just don't want the city to be in competition with the private business out there.
Seven, another way, would you support if a private company came and said, you know, here's where we want to put, we want to do this, and would you support selling city land to them to do that in the industrial area? I think is a way of asking Ms. Farmer's question slightly differently.
Not in the industrial park. But possibly if they wanted to develop, someone wanted to come in and develop it and the city farm per se or something like that, some other city land, maybe entertain that, but-
Okay, this is going to be very interesting how this all coagulates, all these ideas. And they haven't really coagulated yet, so we don't know, we don't have a philosophy, a running philosophy. And that's what I'm looking for and I'm listening all the time. One of the most important characteristics is we could learn from other cities. This has happened in Eagle Ford areas, happened in Odessa, Midland. And that's a wonderful thing that we can look and ask them questions. And they did come here on February 4th and they said, "The number one thing to do is, don't ignore the problem. Don't think there's going to be a bust." All these things they did in Odessa, they said, "Don't do that in your pretty city. You have a very beautiful city. Don't ignore what's going on." And I don't think we are, and that's good. We're trying to get out in front of this and learn. We will plan and we are planning right now. Let me say this, though. What I discovered by just listening to them is lack of housing exasperates most other negative problems that there are out there. Lack of housing, if there are available positions in the police department, because some of the policemen have moved off to the oil field, if there's no housing, they can't move here, so therefore, there's still holes in the police force. And we need more policemen now than we did before last year, right? And with this growing population, we need probably another five or six policemen to be trained right now. $65,000 a piece over 11 months. But we can't get them here if there's no housing. Okay, that's one example of what housing does. And it's already happening in my business. We're losing employees, we're having given pay raises, and we can't find more employees. It's going to happen to the city. And whatever you see this year, times four next year. So what, people moving to the oil field, four times more people will move to the oil field next year. Okay, the amount of people moving to San Angelo, four times more people will move here next year. That's a rough figure, but when you look at the Eagle Ford, that's what it shows. These graphs are exponential and the next year is times three over that. So we're just at the beginning of this. It's going to get serious, it's going to get tougher, faster, and we need to have a very clear idea of what's going on. I think we've reached our goal. If an investor can look at a piece of property and before, we can go talk to the city, talk to AJ, and he would know before he ever got started, is that a good piece of property for an RV park or a long-term park? We'll call it a long-term park right now. He would know before he ever got started whether it's going to pass the Planning Commission and City Council because we have very clear, concise rules that everybody can understand. That's when we've met our goal and we're not even close to that because we don't know what's going on. And so investors can't know what's going on, and that's bad. And if they can't know what's going on, they're not going to build housing here and lack of housing causes all the other problems. And lack of housing drives up rents. $1,000 a room in Odessa and rent's on their way up right now. So if you're a renter, you're poor. If you're an owner that's renting out, you're rich. That's an economic imbalance and that's the kind of things that happen. So what I'm saying here is, we've got to maximize housing or we'll have economic big problems. All right, but then on the other hand, we have a quality of life in San Angelo that's unique. It is not like the other West Texas cities, it is our advantage and we have to protect that quality of life as well. And I realize that there's a beauty here that is like no other. It's the edge of the desert, but it sure is an oasis, right? And then property values. We don't want people to wonder what's going to happen to the property values. That's not good for property values and it hurts, it hurts sale and resale values and that's not what we're about here in the council. We've got to watch that as well. So, something I would look at on long-term parks. If we have control over it, I would say that if they establish there that one or two things have to happen when they leave. Number one, either they can completely clean it up like they've never been there, the Boy Scout motto, you know, "No trace", or they can convert it to something else like a camp for kids, a church camp. So one or the other. But it's got, it can't just be a war zone after they leave. We have to have planning that goes all the way to the very end and sees it to the, to what's going to be later down the road. And then another thing I want to mention last here is I think we need to look at annexation strategies. Because as we shove all these long-term camps out of the city limits, they're going to be on the entrances of our city. The gateways to our city are going to be, it's going to look like Odessa, like it's just, I can just see it right now. I can see it because it's happening on the northwest side of town. It's going to look like Odessa when you're coming in. And when you finally hit the city limits, it'll begin to look like San Angelo, but it's still an oil town. It's still got that element that you can kind of feel that that's not what we want. So we're not solving our problem necessarily to shove them out of town. San Angelo has more property, more city, more property than any of these other cities. It is our advantage to work with that if we can and look at everything, every possibility of them. Locations from the long-term camps and RV camps, we need to look at all of them. And so keep an open mind until we come up with a good philosophy. That's what I'm saying, keep an open mind.
I got that direction for them. What's your direction for them?
That last bit about what happens when they leave is very important. And then an open mind, anything can go if it works, but you have to look at every situation, you have to.
It's okay.
But I think from a 35,000-foot level, you can look down and say, "Look", and this is what I'm looking for from the planning department, is tell me where you think maybe RV parks could go without damaging the quality of life and the beauty and the property values in our city.
Okay, so I mean, again, it sounds like two things Mr. Alexander is getting to. And one is that if someone ceases doing business, that maybe there's something in our ordinance that starts talking about what happens if they cease doing business.
Because of our ordinance.
What they're required to do. So there's something he talked about there. The second thing that he talked about that sounded like an actionable thing was- The second thing that he talked about that sounded like an actionable thing was... Oh, crap. You just said it and I'm losing my mind at the end.
Well, annexation strategies...
No, yeah, you said annexation strategies.
The developer, the main thing... The mission is to make sure the developer can know before he ever purchases the land.
No, no. It was back to geographic specificity. Did you hear what he said? Think about where... If you look from thirty-five-thousand feet down, think about where you would want RV parks or that kind of thing.
Because we have areas out there by the airport and Lake Nazoleti that are just forest of mesquite trees. Is... You can see it, though. Thirty-five thousand, you can see that that's our property. You can look at maps and say... But nobody can see it. It's out in the middle of nowhere, but it's our property. So, can we make something happen there?
All right.
That's what I'm thinking, is you have to look at every sector of the city and make decisions with an open mind and come up with the best plan for San Angelo.
Thank you. A.J. could spend maybe a little time with you on annexation and whether you have a part in that and what to do there. But specifically on this RV issue, it was some geographic specificity you heard, okay? And should there be something in the ordinance that says if they cease operation, there's something they have to do, okay? So, let's let you hear those two things. Ms. Faver?
I would just say, Mr. Alexander, I think part of your question is part of what prompted this meeting. And I don't want to speak for the commissioners.
Right, right.
But from the discussion I heard, I think that that's what I took away from it, was that a lot of the need and desire for this discussion was simply because where these might be appropriate is a matter of opinion. We can give you some recommendations that you may or may not agree with. And so, before the commission takes on the work of telling you what they think is appropriate, trying to tap into what you all think so that we don't spend months putting together a plan and it's not meeting the intent of the overall philosophy of what the city's going to take towards these types of things.
Exactly. The word coagulation is really important because it does come together. As you keep working this thing, it starts to come together. You start getting a grip on some of the things that have to happen, like no trace or camp, you know, when they leave. So, that's an idea I think we can grab onto. We can get more and more of these together. It'll start coming together and it can be pretty darn solid at the end. But it's a very creative process, a lot of collaboration, a lot of putting ideas out there that may not work. But some will, and those are the ones we grab onto and develop out.
I'm dying to hear from the commission.
Okay. I want you to know, it's always a little bit like this where you heard disparate information. Start grabbing the things that were consistent. Consistent was there is a belief up here that there should be a temporary nature to RV parks. If you're going to put something in as a vacation-oriented or RV park, that our current ordinance probably handles that pretty well, okay? If you start then parsing out, is there something we want to do here for longer-term use of RV space? The law now says that you have thirty percent of a mobile home park can be RV spaces, okay? But past that, if we were going to make a change to the ordinance, the things you're hearing is that maybe we should have a strategy about where that should be. So, that sounds like zoning. It sounds like planned development. It sounds like... So, it sounds like that there should be some effort about where should it be? Not hodgepodge necessarily, but there ought to be some organization to where these things ought to be. And that there ought to be restriction on time unless we do something specific and new for something longer term. And that in that, we're thinking that you and this group will learn together some of... From some other communities, what they've done that worked, what they've done that didn't work, and that you'd start fashioning something off of that learning. So, that you have either Midland, Odessa. I suggested that some people in South Texas, not because of oil, but because of snowbirds, have had to figure this out. And so, that I would suggest to you that you look at, you know, people who have had to figure out this kind of longer-term orientation. What have they done right? What have they done wrong? And that this committee can help you do some of that work, okay? And then, you would start putting that together to bring back to the council. But I think you heard philosophically, just putting an RV park in right now, it's short-term. It's... And that there is a desire to be careful about what the geography is, okay? Now, sir, please, let's let you guys ask questions, introduce your own thoughts, whatever you'd like to do.
Can I ask our city attorney one quick question?
Okay. Ms. Bowling?
In designating where they can be and only where an RV park can be, do we get in trouble with, I think it's called redlining, placing people of a certain business? Or is it as a discriminatory act?
Yes. It's something to consider whether it's unconstitutional because of status to prevent people from the freedom to associate and travel and live and occupy places within the city limits. It's something that there's a consideration that we need to take seriously.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
The reason why we're here is to find out if there's an appetite with this council to take control of this problem. I can see that there is. Another thing we're here to find out is, do you want us to set up an autonomous system for dealing with these things where you have geographic requirements saying if it's set aside as requirement A, B, and C, then it shall happen? Or do you want to have like a conditional use or a special use? Or either this board or both of us together have to approve every new use like this? Do we want to describe adequately these temporary living arrangements, which they are not covered in our current ordinance? What we do cover very well in the current ordinance is these recreational, educational, the vocational uses and thirty days or less. So, do we want to describe this new use, which the board wants to? We want to make sure that you do too as well so we can take control of this. Because as it was pointed out, this thing is going to occur outside the city limits, most likely on the most attractive routes into town if we don't actively grab this and exert control over it. Now, the annexation strategy, this is something that your staff works on and the planning staff works on. But we can start thinking about controlling the entrance ways so we look good to the outside and then having these uses in a place where it's the best compromise for our community. So, we exert control and then we come to the best use here. I can see that although you are not unified on the way this should happen, there is interest in making something happen and not just letting the other cities you mentioned, something like that just occur. So, staff's already working on this. So... And it sounds like they're going in the direction that you want it to go, which is to take control. So, I'm satisfied that A.J.'s in the right direction. What I want... I do want to know is, are there geographic type attributes that you would wish to see for these temporary housing things? Did you want to have them where they cannot be seen by the general public? Or do you not want to commit to something like that right now?
No.
Those are the kind of... If they are to occur within the city limits, do you want to make sure there are certain things that are... That we present something to you for your approval that has these items? I can see that if you're talking about recreational use, it's got to be attractive in some way. I mean, it's got to be something where, like the K.O.A., it's very close to a lake. But where with the other type of uses where you have temporary housing for workers, we're primarily interested in going someplace to sleep, that this might occur someplace where high traffic, high noise, and maybe away from other residential uses might be very desirable attributes. So, I'm looking for guidance. So, we are looking for guidance on that as well as we try to solve this problem.
Okay, I'm going to start by giving... Go ahead, darling, that'll be fine.
Well, I think a lot of it is we've discussed all attributes of this thing. But, you know, the ordinance that we currently have is very vague, in my opinion. I think it needs to be spiced up a little bit because, like Mr. Herschfield said a while ago, thirty days, okay, on the twenty-ninth day, what's going to happen is they're going to move two feet because then they follow the ordinance. We need more regulations in the ordinances for RVs. And I think RV parks are beautiful if they're a true RV park. But then, we... It's here, it's coming. We've got... I mean, we might as well make use of it. We've got to figure out ordinances to control this long-term living or, as the oil field people themselves call, man camps. Because it's here. So, we've just got to be able to control it a little bit. And that's where we have, on the Planning Commission, is where we have issues about, well, if we allow this one to do it, we've got to allow this one to do it and this one. And it's a permanent thing. Once you pass that and rezone something, it's permanent.
Right.
You know, so that's a lot of concern. And then, we don't want to bring something to you and that not be your wishes, basically.
Okay, Mr. Wayne.
Listen, I think that one of the first things we need to do, we need a name for this thing. We need the classifications. This... You know, it definitely... I can tell you a lot of things it isn't, but I can't tell you exactly what it is. I think we all feel that way. We need a classification. And I think it can be handled far simpler than we're pretending. First of all, I don't think there's going to be that many applications in the next few years inside the city limits. We can make it difficult if necessary. It has to go through the... We could do this. We could make everyone a planned development. And I think it should be so we know what it is. It may be... It may be mobile homes. It may be RVs that move in and move out. It may be ready-built houses. It may be something else that's constructed, that's meant to be, you know, served for five, ten years or something of that nature. But I think that we just can't think of it having to be travel trailers moving in. It's going to be something else. And that's why a planned development for each one with a special use permit on the property, to me, makes sense. What we do, a plan comes to us, we look it over, we find... Let's say we find no neighbors objecting to it. Not a lot of people care that it goes in there. We, you know... It has to meet the safety requirements and all kinds of requirements from the city and the planned development. We approve it on the planning board. We pass it to the city commission. And you guys can take it from there. Or we can turn it down and you guys take it from there. But I don't think that there's going to be inside the city limits more than three or four in the next few years. Maybe five. Just saying, it's not going to be a great big problem as far as numbers go. You know, the business, I'd just like to say this. The business of studying our housing in this city, our housing will be taken care of with investors and builders. It will be taken care of in an orderly way. This city was built that way. It wasn't the Planning Commission deciding where everything has to be. It wasn't the City Commission deciding where everything has to be. It was the investors. And I think we could make this thing so complicated that it'll never get finished. Or we can work a way that it will work. Think of a name.
Mr. Valenzuela, I think you need to speak to what your timeframe is on your committees and what your charge is. I don't think you're quite correct, sir. So, I don't think we're trying to have the Planning Commission do these things, per se. I think we're trying to... I mean, there are builders involved, there are investors involved, there's every avenue. The real estate group, the apartment association. So, the idea is just to make sure that we give them the right guidelines and then let the private investment take it from there. So, and this thing, I think you're getting some feel for name. It's longer-term temporary housing or longer-term non-permanent housing. So, that's probably what we're dealing with, is longer-term non-permanent housing. But I really do think that it's important that you understand what this committee and subcommittees are supposed to be doing because they involve all of the entities you're describing. All of the... You know, several... There are builders on there, there... All of those folks, they're telling each other what they're doing, where they're building, what they're thinking so that we get the housing.
Well, you know, I've just looked at the building in the last fifty years here. That's just been my experience. And I've seen it as we... As a builder or a developer thinking, gee, I think this land right here is available. And I think it's needed for housing. There's a market here. And they invest their own money in it, and it happens.
And it's happening now. I just... When I said I didn't agree with your characterization, it's not the planning department telling them where. It's them saying, "Here's what we think." That's what I was meaning.
How would you zone that?
Let me say this. I've seen a lot of... Everybody has got some good ideas on the commission. Everybody does. And I think we're all working in approximately the right way. I just think... I'm just throwing out this one idea that it's... Could be simpler done than we're working at it.
And he has down your thought about special, you know, planned development so that that can be part of the discussion. What about over here?
Good morning. I have some thoughts. Whether or not we allow these... I'm going to put my own classification out there, temporary lodging camp. Whether or not we allow a temporary lodging camp inside the city limits, I really believe that we should, in addition to that, also address and identify with cleaner definitions the current RV park ordinance based on the specific purpose that we have in mind, the nature and the spirit of it. That being aside, as we entertain the idea to allow this to be inside the city limits, we're obviously going to have to create a new ordinance, one that allows the integrity of the current RV park ordinance to remain intact, one that has a completely new and unique function, one that keeps in mind that one day, God forbid, and this is talking to citizens, San Angelo might actually need disaster preparedness crews from out of town to help us be restored after natural disasters, as happened in a few years back in Mississippi and Louisiana where they had these camps move in and they restored cities. But when they left, they didn't exactly leave a beautiful place where they lived. A camp of this nature would facilitate that type of requirement. I believe that it must revolve around protecting our citizens' way of life and the value of their property in our neighborhoods. One that sets the example for the neighboring communities. I forget which one of you said that, but I believe that's a great idea. The example for how every town after us ought to do it. It must identify, I believe, a timing requirement for how long they can stay. And I believe that its vernacular must reflect its specific purpose as a temporary lodging camp. This ordinance must have guidelines that are enforceable, realistically enforceable, through code and S.A.P.D., so we might want to ask for their input. Mr. Alexander, you said restoration clause. I completely agree. One thing we have with our ordinances for towers is that one year after... One year of inactivity, they must be decommissioned. I think something of that nature might fit, which is one year of no activity on the land. It must be restored to its previous or better condition. And as far as that meeting on Friday, I volunteer myself to be there for the housing group, subcommittee.
I'm the newest commissioner, so I'm really start just still educating myself in all this. The rest of the commissioners have been involved in it a lot longer and are a lot more informed. And so, I mean, I think I've recently moved here from Austin. And I think in terms of the RV parks, they're definitely something that need to be done. I think it's going to bring tourism. I think we've got some wonderful hospitals in this town who are improving their research and are going to have some long-term care patients who may choose to move into these RV parks. As far as the man camps go, I think, you know, obviously strict governance on them to keep things in order. And exit strategy, I agree with that as well. Maybe something even to the point of putting up a deposit and an amount of funds that the city can hold on to so that if they do belly up and leave town, we've got money to go back in and restore those areas. But, you know, in terms of my knowledge in multifamily housing and that industry when I was in Austin, I do know there are a lot of people who do choose to live in RV parks long-term. I have a personal friend who is a real estate investor, and he found that it was more cost-effective for him to buy a nice RV, move into an RV park and live long-term, and rent out all of his properties. So, I, you know... I think there does need to be some guidelines on the length of stay. But I do see... the length of stay, but I do see opportunities where reasonable people may choose to live in an RV establishment for long-term. So, something to think about while we're going through this.
Okay. I'm going to ask Ms. Favre to spend a little time on what, what we feel like are, and Mr. Valenzuela, or whoever else you think would be part of this, but spend a little time on what short-term and longer-term means under what our current guidelines say, and then, and then go from there. Again, I really think a lot of the work's going to be done by this committee and you, and that that's pressing forward right now, and that maybe what we're asking you to do for the moment is to let that work get done before you start making a lot of decisions related to what's going on, understanding that we all have a sense of urgency about that work.
And when do you anticipate you'll have your finding?
As far as the findings, I mean, we're bringing together research, and then on this, the meetings this week, really, we want to start establishing the framework as far as the plan and the action steps. So, I mean, we're looking within the next two to three weeks where we can have something pretty solid in place, you know, that we can actually come to and let you know, this is what we've come up with, these are the action steps, this is what we feel will work for us. Okay?
Thank you.
To answer your question, as far as what the ordinance speaks to temporary as now, it simply says an average length of stay of 30 days or less.
Okay.
So, it is...
What's the average? Average of who? Average?
Meaning of all of, all of the different tenants that you have. On the average, your average tenant is staying there 30 days or less.
So, some tenants can stay two months, but you have to have some stay in two weeks and one week.
Correct.
Okay. Because I know they're staying more than one month.
Right.
A lot of times.
What would the zoning classification be?
I'm sorry.
She's asking what the zoning classification might be that would be coordinate, or would, I don't know what, I'm losing words too, but...
Basically, what's synonymous with that.
What would fit this non-permanent, longer-term temporary housing? What?
Right now, we have the, we have two use classifications that address this. The first, which is what we've been utilizing for all of these, is the campground RV park use classification, which is allowed in most of the zoning districts, with the exception of many of the residential zoning districts. But in any zoning district, it is only allowed through a special use, which is heard by both the planning commission and the city council. So, there is no allowed by right for that use classification. We also have a retail use classification, which is a very overarching classification, which, with subsets, and under the entertainment subset. It also refers to a variety of lodging types, hotels, motels, and it does say campground RVs as well. That use classification is allowed by right in some zoning districts, and most of those are commercial in nature.
Okay. Help me out here. Say, on Loop 306, where the time clock's plus, there's a vacant lot right there, and that is zoned a commercial use. So, if I owned that land, could I go out there and buy a man cave kit with these items and put it on that land? I mean, it's, you know, several lots, it's half a block, you know, size, residential's on the other side. Could that happen, something like this?
It all comes down to intent, and I think that that's what makes the current ordinance difficult. If your intent is to utilize that for permanent dwelling purposes, then no, you couldn't. You would have to seek the approval for household living in that classification. If you are looking at doing it for recreational purposes, then you would have to follow the special use procedures outlined for campground and RV parks. If you're looking at establishing a type of complex, for lack of a better word, that would be akin to motel hotel type of stays, but in that type of structure, then you would probably be able to do that based on the type of commercial classification. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact there, but I would suspect it's probably general commercial.
So, if I purchased my home for $385,000 in that area, and there's a half-block section that, right across the street as it is, or down the street just ways, that is zoned commercial, then they could go in and put something like this in there, and I personally think it devalues my resident, my home. And as a citizen, I've got problems with it. As a council member, I've got problems with it. I don't want to devalue any person's real estate or their holdings. That's what bothers me about allowing these in the city limits, is you take a high risk of property devaluating, and you're going to get a lot of people's attention that way. Bad, they're not going to like it when we do something of that. So, the placement of a man camp, or specifically, I still don't want them in the city limits. They devalue an area. If you go over between Midland and Odessa, and there's a park that's called Modessa, Modessa. And, I mean, it becomes trashy because of the constant traffic and flow-through, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, in and out, diesel engines and the noise. And I'm opposed to something being just down the street or in my neighborhood. And I've had a lot of calls from folks that they're highly opposed to it as well. So, I'm expressing that opinion.
I think that's probably one of the largest issues that we see is staff trying to utilize the ordinance and apply it. The ordinance that we have, which was passed in 2000, I don't think anticipated this type of activity, and was really looking at these types of uses simply for vacation purposes. And so, the ordinance that we have addresses that intent. And so, what we've had to do thus far is be very diligent in visiting with applicants or potential applicants, and really getting into the details of what their intentions are with the park, to determine if it really is something that the current ordinance intended to regulate, or if it's a different animal altogether. And we're seeing more and more that most of the intents that we're getting are a different animal altogether. And so, that's been the basis of most of our discussion with the planning commission, is addressing that sort of area of gray.
But, so again, though, I think what you hear is, there's an effort to get you more solid information, giving you information from other communities, what has happened well, what has happened poorly, what you could learn from there. There is a feeling that anything that's outside of the vacation use should have some geographic specificity to it, not allowed all over town. Okay? And, and that there, so, I think those are things you can take away from this, that you can act on, and that you'd work next with staff and this committee, and get information, and then, and then we would move forward. And anything that you act on as a planning commission between now and the time that those things are in play, you push off until you have that set of guidelines to go by, would be the way I would try to direct you. Okay?
I've got two final questions.
Okay, go ahead.
And either AJ or Mr. Chairman. We're talking about applications. One, my first question is, how many applicants have come your way or across your desk that we either have tabled or denied? How many there, and why? Is it because of this? And then, secondly, clarify for me, because I'm still a little confused on the 30% mobile home usage in an RV park? Is that?
In a manufactured, in a manufactured park, manufactured home park, MHP, which is our zoning district, you are allowed to have a maximum of 30% of your units as recreational vehicles. At least 70% have to be manufactured homes, which meet all building codes.
But it has nothing to do with RV parks, mobile homes?
It doesn't. I simply just wanted you to know that there is some allowance for those to be placed now in those districts, just so you're aware of that.
I would be totally against that. But, okay, that's, I'm clear now. Thank you. Oh, the applications?
Probably a two-part answer, so I'll start. The applicants that we have had so far, I believe we've had a total of six that have been looking at doing these for temporary living, exactly what we're talking about here today. We've had a couple of those that withdrew because they saw that we were working through this process and knew that they probably needed some more time. And then, as far as the reasons behind tabling it, that's probably a more appropriate question for the planning commission chair.
Yes. This commission has observed these coming in, and when the applicant or the proponent comes before the commission, we have begun to realize that either they, the intent of their use is for the recreational, educational, vacation type, less than 30 days, or it's not. There's something else that they really want to do with that property, but they want to get the, this campground type of use designation. When we pick up on the fact, and apparently, we've been doing a lot of picking up on this fact, we table the request, so that this process, so that the process staff is going through can go on.
We have no classification, don't they?
No, we can, we understand that what they're asking for currently is not covered in ordinance. It's something else. So, we have pretty much put these things on ice procedurally until we can come to some kind of coherent understanding of what our plan is going forward. In cases where it's very clear, it's actually an RV park, which you saw, the only case that that applies to, where there are horse bridle paths and commitment for the less than 30 days, and very, very much of a recreational, we've allowed those to proceed, because they are allowed by an underlaw. So, that's, but when we understand that they're actually asking for something else, there's something else going on, we haven't been tabling them as a strategy. And we are going to continue to do that, so that we can, so that we don't have non-compliant uses.
But you won't have to do it for six months. I mean, we really are all in a hurry. And I think your action is appropriate. I think the way you're handling things is appropriate. I, you know, and, and I think the name is going to come out of this. Okay? I really, I really do. They're going to have to come up with temporary non-permanent housing guidelines. And, and we're going to, and you're going to have to help implement an ordinance. And you can tighten up the current ordinance sum during that process, or we can visit that, and we can come up with something that's new and different, that describes this other need that's, that's coming, that has to do with, you know, again, temporary, non-permanent housing, but it's much more permanent than a week in an RV park. And so, that's coming, and I think the process is moving as fast as it can.
Actually, let me get something here. And I'm, I'm sorry that Mr. Valenzuela isn't here, but I want to compliment him on the high quality of his staff. As we do the research with other cities, we find out that there are gaps, and they're not even to where we are. So, the staff that San Angelo currently is equipped with is actually one of the best staffs in West Texas, and maybe farther out. So, we really do appreciate the quality that he's been able to put together.
Thanks.
Yeah. The, the thing about it is, I think we have had two that we've postponed on, right? Or is it just one?
Two.
No, that was actually brought to the...
Tabled.
That were tabled. Yeah. But it's...
Everyone.
Okay.
Every one.
But you do have, I mean, we do understand, and you understand what you're doing. You're postponing those that you feel like you don't have guidelines for. And we're getting the guidelines put together as quickly as we can, working with you, and then we'll move forward from there.
Let me, let me say this. I think it would be desirable, when we're talking about the true RV campgrounds, for snowbirds. They're, 30 days is not quite enough, maybe. I mean, suppose they're coming down here for the winter. But I want to be careful.
I understand you.
Okay.
I do. I mean, it's hard. Ms. Farmer?
I wanted to ask this commissioner a question. A special use permit, that comes through you guys, right? And the special use stays with the land?
A special use comes to us both. We approve it, and then you approve it.
Right. It goes to you first. But it stays with the land, right?
That's correct.
How do you feel about change, when you rewrite this and do an ordinance, how do you feel about making a special use permit, has to be renewed every year? Meaning, you've got some control to go in, I think one of the places...
That's a stroke of genius.
I'm sorry?
That's a stroke of genius. That's very smart of you.
Well, it's not smart of me. AJ, in the cities and stuff, and the report that she gave y'all about a month ago, I was in the audience, and I was reading the material, and a city east of us, they make it have to be renewed each year. And the reason is, they can control that special use or not reissue if they're not living up to standards. And I was wondering how y'all felt about implementing that, as this other city did. And AJ's the one that provided the information. I just picked up on it.
You're right. And just to clarify, our special use permit procedure, you have one year from the date of approval to obtain your building permit. It does expire if you do not do that. As long as you meet that requirement, it does run with the land in perpetuity. So, just a clarification.
But we can make it where it's renewable every year, every year.
There are, there's, there's a possibility to do that, yes. We would need to look into that a little further.
I actually think that we're all on the same page now with the subcommittees and them putting things together. And I think that's, that's kind of our guidelines and changing the ordinances. I think we're kind of all on the same page, and that's kind of what we wanted.
I thought that was when you were bleeding. But are y'all going to let me shut this thing down, or?
No, I have one. I have one.
Cottage cheese coagulates? No?
Okay, maybe.
Mr. Bill, or Mr. Chairman, I know that if we are tabling applications, have tabled or didn't, I know that we haven't even gotten to the point where we send out letters of notification. So, is it safe to say, I mean, it's safe to say that we're not sending, we haven't sent anything out to the surrounding communities. But have you guys gotten any feedback on any of these proposed sites? I mean, any kind of feedback, negative, positive? What have you got?
Well, yes, we have pretty good attendance when one of these uses is proposed. And we have, I believe we went seven hours?
Yeah.
We had a seven-hour meeting, not the last meeting, the meeting before. And we've instituted, like, mandatory lunch breaks in between the comments. So, the, we have very interested citizenry on this, this subject. And we are, we are doing our best to make sure everyone is heard, and so that we can gather all of the diverse opinions that are involved in this very, very, very challenging subject. But yes, an example is that there's concern that our current ordinance is not enforceable, the 30 days, you know. Currently, I don't think there is much enforcement of that 30 days. Nobody's going and putting a chalk mark on tires and on these trailers or whatever.
Right.
There's another concern that we may not have adequate enforcement capability to actually handle these, these new uses. And this, this may be true. There's, there's uses of, the juxtaposition of these, these uses with other uses that really need more than just a buffer, but maybe, you know, real geographic isolation in order for there to be a comfort level with the regular residential uses we have here.
Right.
And there are other, and of course, there are other opinions that these, these uses should not occur within the corporate boundaries of San Angelo at all. But then we hear the other argument, which is, well, of course, will spring up all around.
It's very hard, it's very hard to not control also, right?
And then, and then we also have the, of course, we have the classic planning issue of control versus free enterprise.
So, does that, the 200-foot area notification, is that, does it apply to this, something like this?
Yes.
Yes.
Johnny, there was one, the last meeting, we had no objections.
Get the mic, I think.
Well, the last meeting, we had one site that there was no objections at all. But we tabled it because...
You want guidelines. I mean, again, I think Ms. Jones did the nice job of saying, it sounds like we've got this, where we got a general understanding. We have subcommittees working, we're, we're moving forward. So, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and close down your meeting for me. I'm going to close this down and go to, you'd like some public comment, Mr. Turner? Okay. I'm going to get you to close down your meeting, close down our meeting, and go to break. But I, but he's making the great point that let's do take some public comment, and then close things down. Okay?
Okay. So, does he want to?
Yes, my name is Jim Turner. One of the areas you might want to look at that's dealt with this problem historically has been military bases and the military in general. They have a large transit population that tends to fluctuate over time, and they have set up things like housing offices, et cetera, to deal with this. And a public-private partnership housing office for these, call them midterm housing, would be an excellent vehicle to solve a lot of the problems you're dealing with here. Second thing you remember when you're dealing with this, if you force it outside of the city limits, you're forcing it outside of the area you actually have control over, and you're forcing it on to a government that doesn't have, has many resources, when you're talking to county, to deal with problem areas, whether it's health, sanitation, police, you name it. So, you have to be careful that you're just not handing somebody else a bag of worms that you don't want to deal with inside town. And if the problems are at the gateways and on the highways leading into San Angelo, San Angelo looks just as bad, because if the city limit sign is buried under trash, they can't tell. So, you have... So you have to be careful about that, and you have to have something very much that's enforceable, understandable, and simple, and a lot of the recent history on ordinances we have here don't fit that mold very well. And you might, on some of these special areas, also want to put in there that if you're going to have this type of an area, you must supply on your own a certain amount of cleanup capability, a certain amount of health inspection capability, and a certain amount of law enforcement, security, public safety on your own. You may want to, if it's over a certain size, say you have to have your own guard on premises to take care of these issues, and to coordinate our police department and our public safety with your people there. So, we need to have in place not only just some regulations, statutes, and things like that, but we actually need to have, if you're going to have a midterm housing, you're going to have to have additional things beyond what you'd expect in an apartment complex, and so on. You have to have the ability to take some of the load off of city resources that you're gonna be putting there by that, whether it's public safety, health, trash, you name it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I need a resolution? Just a moment, I need one more ask about public comment. Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay, now, Mr. Lawrence.
Do I need a resolution to shut our, our meeting down?
I don't think you have to do anything except take a motion and shut yourself down.
Okay, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, if I said, if I had a fan, so opposed?
Okay. Okay, they're in adjournment, and we are going to adjourn our meeting with them at this time, and move into a break, and then come back and start with the regular agenda, item number two. I have a quorum, so let's go ahead and kick off. I have item number two, number four, and number six, which I don't think will take very long. And I have a group that's trying to make a flight. What time is the flight you're trying to make?
I don't think they have a flight, but they have some other appointments they need to try to get to that are out of town.
Okay, so...
They're driving.
Right. We have two, four, six, and one, one presentation that'll last a little bit, and then they're up.
Okay.
So I don't think it, that's why I'm trying to figure out how sensitive, because I think they're gonna be pretty quick anyway.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, item number two, consideration of selecting Selectron Technologies, which is an interactive voice response system, costs $35,000, and has to do with phone-in water billing credit card payment system.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm the one who pulled it, I don't have a problem with it, I think it's great, it's wonderful, it's a long time in coming. I just wanted the camera for the video to talk about it a little bit, if you would, about we're finally being able to take payments credit card-wise. I just wanted to call it to the attention of the public.
Okay. This interactive voice response system will allow citizens to be able to call in, and not only pay their bill online, but they'll be able to access all their account information. And that's crucial. They can get billing, payment, consumption, history, balance due, due date, and then make payment through verbal and touch-tone prompt. This proposed system will reduce call volumes, and that's the problem that, that we're seeing. I'm getting a lot of phone calls from citizens that try to call in and make credit card payments now, which they can, but they actually have to talk to somebody, and a lot of times we can't get to the phone. So, we're hoping this will reduce some of our phone calls. The customer service ladies now are averaging about 4,000 phone calls a month for different things anyway, so anything to do to help them, I think, could be great. Like the mayor said, the total cost is 35,000. 20,000, that's the initial installation, and then there's a $15,000 annual cost.
Motion to approve.
We can get, with this 15,000, will get us credit for 40,000 phone calls a month, so we'll have plenty.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve as, as presented, and thank you for the explanation.
Question?
Okay, Mr. Silves.
Mr. Dixon, I assume this is budgeted, this is within budget?
Yes, sir.
And also, is it credit, credit slash debit card, or is it just credit?
I'm not sure, hang on just a second.
It's both?
It's both, good.
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions? Public input? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On item number four, this is consideration of approving a special recreational lease agreement in a substantially attached form with George Ellis and his wife, Amy Ellis, and it's for an area of about two-thirds of an acre. I think Mr. Alexander asked for this to be pulled, so Mr. Alexander?
It's just, I don't have, I can't find a map, I don't know where they live, I can't, just by looking at the description of the lot, I don't know what we're doing. And my, you know, my job is to watch over what we're doing, and making sure that we're not interfering with the, the planning going on at the lake and things like that. I just, I just gotta be able to understand that before I prove it.
I do have a map, and I didn't know this would be pulled, or I'd try to get you something, but I do have a map of it.
Do you know, do you know where they live?
It's the south end, the property just adjacent, the south end of Lake Nazworthy Dam, is where the, Mr. Ellis lives.
Okay.
And the property is across...
It's an interior property.
Right, it's got access easements to all the other properties.
You have his house on the lake, his neighbor's house on the lake, another house on the lake. There's a piece of city property that's interior, doesn't get to the lake, okay? And that's what he's trying to get permission to utilize.
Is he sharing this recreation, this area with other neighbors, or just himself, or...
That, no, this, this piece that he will lease is the only portion that's leased right now. Other property owners adjacent to that property will have the right to lease a section of that land also.
Okay. All right.
It, I don't, there was not a map as part of this presentation.
He drew a great map, Mr. Mayor. That was a great map.
He has, it was in the, yeah, a virtual map. The thing I wanted Paul to understand is that it doesn't touch the lake, or it's not next to him, it's actually more or less behind his house, in the interior. And he's worked with his, he's worked with his neighbors on access to their properties and on all of that.
And you know where it is?
I do know where it is.
I'll hold you responsible. I'll vote yes, but I'll hold you responsible.
Hold me responsible, that's great.
Right behind your yes. And I'll do that, and I'll just say, well, Mayor, you knew about it, and...
Okay, how many wives can I have?
There may not be a limit.
All right, anyway, okay. What else do you want to, do you have something there?
That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Alexander, it's, did you get your question answered, or are you okay?
Pretty much, if you know, you know what's going on with the lake, and you know that property, so if you're satisfied, I'm satisfied.
Well, I believe his neighbors are satisfied, so that's what makes me feel okay.
Good, good.
We'll all hold you accountable, if that's okay.
Outstanding, okay. Maybe in just a couple or three months, y'all can run me out of here. So, let's call for this vote.
You gotta have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, I got a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second. Now, let me see if I have any other questions. Do I have any public input? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go to item number six. Ms. Farmer, this is consideration of a request to release a utility easement and a first replat. And so, let me, let me get you to walk us through what you need.
Yes, I had talked to Jeff last night, I believe it was, and I'm still not certain. Do you have a map to show us? How much acreage is this, and the location?
It's on 14th and Bryant.
Yeah, okay.
This is the plat of the property, the way that it sits now, and the property owner is here to explain their intention behind abandoning this easement, it's Mr. Blannick. The easement runs through the middle here, it's highlighted in pink. It's a 25-foot utility easement, and similar to subdivisions that we do, we've sent this out to the utility companies, Sutton Link, AEP, and et cetera, got those comments back. No one had any facilities in that easement. The only condition was that replating of the property, since there's some water service being accessed, water utilities needs to be platted back into one lot, so there won't be a lot without service. So that's where that condition comes from. Does that answer your question, or...
Yes, motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any further questions?
Jeff, so that's an alley, is that right?
No, it's, it's private property now, it doesn't have any public access, only utility access, so it'll be, when that easement is released, they'll be able to do it.
So the property owners around that, I mean, I guess, oh, there are now?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the same owner. There's, this is all one lot, there's just an easement running kind of where an alley would be, there's an easement running through it. This was a replat of the Miles addition originally, so there likely was an alley there at one point, but it's just a utility easement now, though.
It doesn't affect anybody else?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to, to approve as presented, and any further questions? Any public input? Call for this vote, all, public input, come on in.
Yes, I have a layout of the, my name is Louis Blannick.
Howdy, boy.
And I'm one of the owners of the property. And I guess I can start right here. This is what's going on, and then here's some pictures and what have you.
Okay.
You're getting to have a part-time job coming to meetings, that's good.
It's gonna be a Baymont Inn and Suites that'll be there, so it'll be 74 rooms, and you can look on there, we're possibly gonna do an, an additional building behind. We're gonna leave almost, a little over an acre back there, because we've talked with a lot of the cowboys at the rodeo and what have you, and they've all said, you know, our biggest problem with motels and what have you is place to park our, our trucks and our trailers. So we're gonna take that back section of land there, behind the motel, and we're gonna actually clean it up and pave it, so that we, the rodeo people can park, and whoever else has a big rig and what have you.
And it's Bryant, Martin Luther King, 15th Street, and 14th Street.
We own the entire block, they'll end up with, there'll be a big boulevard, right, 40-foot boulevard down the middle of the property where this easement is, and either side will be a .905 acre tract for a franchise or whatever else, so, so, and then, then the Baymont Inn and Suites.
Will be on the back half, or whatever.
Right. It's 242 feet to the property where the motel will be from the Bryant Boulevard.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Louis, I've always thought a motel out there with some stables at the back, so that these rodeo people can have a place.
Maybe some, a horse motel too?
A horse motel.
Okay.
Thank you, man, I appreciate it.
Now, we're, we're gonna slide back into talking about roosters, be careful. All right. Okay, so we, we have a presentation on this item, do I have a, I got a motion, I got a second, I got everything, do I have any further public input? All right, let me call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move then to item number 10. This is a presentation of the Downtown San Angelo Incorporated Third and Fourth Quarter 2012 Quarterly Reports. Presentation today is by the Executive Director, Dale Velazquez. Hello, sir.
Good, good afternoon, I think. I'm gonna try to make this real short and sweet. Just recently returned to this position after a four-year break as the Executive Director, and I will tell you that the differences are significant in terms of just the activities, the new businesses that are, are being, coming into the downtown area, just within the next four or five months, we've got at least five that I know of for sure, new businesses that are moving into the downtown district. I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna skip all of the different financial information, you've got those packets, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those. But one of the things that's really important, as we see it from our perspective, is downtown living, and developing, and working towards making more availability for people to lease or own and rent properties in the downtown area. This particular project that's on the screen right now is well on its way, and again, we're, we're ecstatic that that is happening in terms of its development. This particular project actually had some financial impact while it was shut down during the remodeling, because of the business that it generates. It did, it did impact our, our tax results for the, for the quarter. This particular project, the San Angelo Hotel and Conference Center remodeling, has had a tremendous impact for us, especially because of the traffic that it's created for downtown in relationship to, to businesses, seeing some impact as far as what's happened there. I just went back past the, the building of the San Angelo Area Foundation, that's new construction on the corner of Concho and Irving, a two, over $2 million project that is well on its way. Again, it's gonna have a significant impact for our downtown area.
He flipped through, he flipped through the slide?
Yeah, I'm sorry. How do I go back?
That was the old Burger King.
Different error.
Discount.
Okay, there, there it is, sorry. That's the one I was referring to. This particular project...
How are we doing? I mean, my understanding is that on a couple of these projects, we're having trouble because of the number of entities groups go through. So are you hearing anything about the River Corridor Commission, the Historic Commission, the planning process, or going through the planning process and then having to redo something, or, I mean, what are you hearing? Because I'm hearing some problems with that, and I want that addressed, and want it dealt with, and won't be dealt with if it's not talked about, so...
Right.
Are you hearing things along those lines also?
To some degree. I know, again, referencing back to my first, when I was here two, four years ago, in this position, the, one of the things that, that came out of some of the complaints, and some of the advocacy work that we did with the city, created the development, or helped assist with the development of the Development Resource Council, which we meet on Friday mornings, and we have all of the groups that are represented at those particular meetings, where new construction, or remodeling, or whatever it is that's coming in, has an opportunity to visit with all of the city representatives, and that has helped considerably eliminate some of the, some of the downtime. But in terms of the commissions, the different commissions, yeah, I would say that there's some folks that are...
Well, I know on one of your projects, that the River Corridor Commission was involved, and that the River Corridor, you know, they'd already been given their permit, already moving forward, River Corridor Commission's involved, they have to slow down the project, go before the River Corridor Commission, find out that they don't have a quorum, so they don't get action at that meeting, and have to put it back on hold, so that they can wait for something to come together, so that they can move forward. And I find that just, you know, just untenable.
Yes, it's a deterrent.
When you've got, when you've got somebody spending money and trying to construct something, and then you can't get a quorum, then that means you either don't need the commission, because they don't fulfill their responsibility, or you need to restrict the amount of geography that they're responsible for. This product's not even on the river. This is a block off of the river. So, I mean, if we're gonna have trouble with projects, then, then we either need to kick them in the tail, make them get together and do their job, take something away from them, where they're not dealing with things that aren't on the river, or, or something.
Just as a note, I believe, and I might stand corrected, but I believe that that River Corridor has now been combined into the design and historic. And so, and that was one of the reasons, because I had personal experience with the same situation, River Corridor, the, the, all those, and, and so I'm, I think we're somewhat pleased today with the structure of our design and historic review.
Except for it apparently didn't get them to a quorum recently.
Correct, that is a fact.
Okay.
We did, or, I'm not on the committee, by the way, but I do attend the meetings, and the last two meetings, we've not had quorums.
Wow.
Then I think we need to address that. That's its own problem.
And that's what I'm describing.
Right.
It's like, here they are involved in these construction projects, and they can't get quorums, and so then these projects can't move forward.
That's correct.
And so, and so then I'm looking at it and saying, shoot, let's look at what the River Corridor Commission's boundary is. This is not on the river, it's a block off. Let's just start looking at, at setting it up where they don't have to get together if they don't want to, so...
Mayor, let me just say that you're absolutely right, because I just had a, had a meeting last Friday with a gentleman at a church right across the street from the Station 618 Friday with a gentleman at a church right across the street from the Station six eighteen building, and I, I'm going to invite Daniel out there, but this church has been trying to open for a long time, and they're, the city, the Fire Marshal's Office has given them hoops and hoops and obstacles and everything, and you know, it, it comes to a point where they get frustrated, and I know we're getting off topic, but I just wanna throw that in, I totally agree that there's, there's some commissions out there that just, my gosh, they just make it a little too difficult.
Um, I'm trying to be on topic by saying, there's some stuff here, you're saying we're developing downtown, I want us to get out of the way, so.
Yeah, I, I, and I agree, Mayor.
Dale, what is that going to be? Can you tell us?
This particular building here, it's Discount Tire.
Oh, no, but, well, there's another one on the other side of Grandy's, is it?
Right.
Do you know what that is?
I don't have confirmation, but I understand that uh, Starbucks is, is going to be.
That's what I've heard too.
Yeah, that Starbucks is, is going to be moving into that area.
Right.
Cumulative during the third quarter, uh, we saw a sixty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty, six hundred and forty, I'm sorry, sixty-three million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and forty-two uh, in terms of investment and reinvestment in the downtown area during the third quarter. The fourth quarter is not much different, just a slight increase. But I will tell you, again, based on uh, my, starting the job in January, and what I'm experiencing and, and the phone calls that I'm getting, uh, in fact, just last week, I got a phone call from two gentlemen from Midland who are interested in developing businesses in downtown San Angelo, uh, and I'm supposed to be visiting with them, uh, within the next two weeks, they're coming down to visit with us, uh, to see about where and how they should progress with their business plans. We have a light manufacturing company that is also interested in moving from another city to San Angelo, um, that has contacted us, that we're working with across the board, with different organizations that are all working together, and I also wanted to just make that one comment, uh, working with the Economic Development Group at the Chamber, as well as the city coast of DC, um, the city staff, uh, all of those entities are so important for us to coordinate, has, has just been a, a big difference in my relationship, again, following back on my experience in the past, so with that, I'll just conclude this conversation unless you have any other questions.
Okay, questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon? Would you guys like to bring up our group from Neptune Technology, and we'll do the item number eleven demonstration and consideration?
I have with me today Charlie Trimble at Neptune Technologies and Abe Riggsby, he's the Product Manager for Customer Web Portal Software that, he wants to do a, a short couple-hour demonstration here that we should be, we should be up about two thirty or so, so we, we should be good. Abe, you wanna come up and try to get this loaded up while I?
Motion to adjourn.
Ramble here, so. But this is a, for your consideration today, um, Neptune software that will allow the city customers that have the AMR meters to access their account, look at their water usage, get alerts, see what they're doing, set budgets, there's a lot of options here that Abe will go through, so with that, I'll turn it over to him and we'll get out of here pretty quick.
Thanks for having me. I, I wanna give a brief demonstration, and feel free to ask any questions once we get through, and I'll be glad to, to address those. So, what you'll see here is the, what we call our inside IQ software, uh, what would happen is, uh, we would skin it with the City of San Angelo banner, different things like that, so when the end customer, the utility customer were logging onto the application, they would see City of San Angelo's, you know, Customer Web Portal, uh, Water Consumption Viewing Site. What they would do is, um, after the utility, you know, sends out the communication that the site is available, um, they would go and enroll themselves, that way they're not calling the cut, the utility, bogging them down with phone calls, so it would send the link out, you'll see here is, is most websites, you've, you've probably seen in the past where you sign up for user ID and password, you would go click here to register, um, we register your email address and allow you to create your password, so you would put in the email address that you want to use to log in, then your password, it gives you the restrictions as far as what, what characters and things like that. Once you continue to the next step there, we would have security questions so that the consumer would, would be able to verify that this was their account based off of, you know, water bill, account number, different things like that, that way there's nobody in there that can go in and sign up for an account for a particular homeowner that they don't, you know, are not living in and dwelling in. So, once that happens, uh, we send an email verification to the email address, you then log into that email account, verify that you do own that account, then you're ready to log in. I'm gonna log in as a, as a customer. So I'm logging into, to my account, uh, this is a demo database here, so what I'm gonna do is go in and, and show you uh, consumption for a particular time period, I'm gonna go back to March the first of two thousand and twelve, I'm gonna look at um, my consumption for March the first through March the tenth. One thing you'll notice when you log into the account, it has nothing in reference to who I am or where I live, so if somebody, for security reasons, if you were to log, you know, to, to get somebody's email and password, there's no way for them to know where, where this person lives, to look at any, any type of uh, consumption, consumption patterns to, to, to know when you're home and when you're not home, so we felt that was important. You'll see here, uh, the consumption graphs, uh, the first thing that, that you would see here is a continuous leak alert, I know you've probably had communication from the utility where you have seen that, that our meters do uh, track leak, reverse flow, different things like that. So when I log on to my account, if I do have a continuous leak, I would see that visually with this continuous leak icon, you would also see uh, the consumption as well as the continuous leak alert, and it's showing the number one there, so for that day, um, I have a, have had a continuous leak. We also, I'll show in.
I don't see it, what are you talking about?
Right here, you'll see a leak icon, the um, the red faucet looking icon here, you'll also see the, where it says consumption, right underneath that, it says continuous leak alerts and the number one there.
Okay.
Uh, I also wanna point out, there's a red line that kinda goes across the graph here, um, that's what we call our daily water budget. And the reason that's important is we take an average of the last four days of the week, so we look at every, the last four Mondays, the last four Tuesdays, all the way up to, you know, Saturday and Sunday where you have a larger number of, of consumption of water, and we, we do it, we call it a day of week average, and the reason that's important is when you have um, a fixed income individual who, who needs their, their water consumption to be consistent and at a certain amount, we can then go set what we call daily water budget alerts, so if I wanna be notified, if I use ten percent over what I normally use for that Monday or that Saturday, I can set that all the way up to two hundred percent, so that way it, it does control me as far as my budget and how much I use. You'll also notice the precipitation and temperature data, we also track that as well, and, and, you know, we felt that was important when you're looking at, uh, you know, let's say a drought season, um, why use more consumption this year versus last year, I know why, you know, the precipitation was lower than normal, and um, you know, the temperature, it may have been hotter than, than usual, so we also track that as well. You can also go all the way down to hourly consumption, um, you know, our meters do, do get that low of resolution, you'll see here that it shows every hour, I can just drag over my graph here, zoom in to a certain area, and then I can use my slider to, to go throughout the timeframe that I have specified up top. Any questions on the viewing consumption before we go any further?
I've got one.
Go ahead.
Does this, this graph appears to show a leak?
Yes.
Down at the bottom, would you illustrate?
What constitutes a continuous leak?
How you can tell there's a leak on this graph? That constant usage across the bottom of the graph indicates a leak, right?
Well, actually, the, the way our meters work, if we, uh, we, we go down, all the way down to, to, we sample the, the meter every fifteen minutes, so if there is water being used in ninety-six, there's ninety-six fifteen, fifteen-minute intervals throughout the day, if we sam, if we, if we realize there's been usage in every fifteen-minute interval throughout the day, then we know that there's continuous usage. Now, we, we're very careful how, we, we don't wanna say you have a leak, um, because somebody could in fact be using that continuously, but um, you know, we know, we know in fact that there is continuous usage going throughout the meter, typically it is a leak, but um, you know, you gotta be careful how you, how you, you know, describe it.
But you can see that on that graph, would you show us, show council, what the symptom is when you look at that graph, that there might be a leak? The bottom of this graph that you have right there, there's no, the, the lowest.
This, this is where.
You just changed it.
Well, well, the reason we don't show that in hourly is because it, it bunches up and you, the icons would stack over each other.
All right, can you go back to the, the screen you had up just a minute ago?
Just the hourly?
See how at the bottom?
Yeah, and that, that's what I, see, we, we look at a daily, um, just because you have usage in a, in a, in an hour, that doesn't mean you have a leak.
Okay.
But every hour does.
Yeah, you have, you have to sample the entire day to be able to look to know whether they have a leak or not.
When a customer comes in and says, I wasn't using water, but the graph looks like this, usually that means they have a leak.
Well, they're using water, not necessarily a leak, but yeah.
That's an indication of something.
Yes.
Right. When they say they're not using water, but water's moving through the meter, usually that means a leak.
More likely.
My point is, this has been very helpful for us in dealing with customers, uh, very positive to be able to see that usage broken down into even hourly, the hourly, I think, is what we've been using, but these fifteen-minute increments is, is very beneficial to be able to go in, when a customer says, it's shut off, I'm not using anything, and yet we see this pattern where there is still water moving through the meter, in this fashion, in a consistent, in a consistent amount, usually indicates a leak, or they've left something on.
Absolutely.
It's very, very useful when you're having that, that discussion.
Conversation, yeah.
And that's, and that's a great point, I know Mr. Dixon talked about earlier, the cutting down the number of, of phone calls to the utility, that, that's what we're, we're trying to conserve usage, uh, to, to make folks more accountable what they're using, as well as cut down on calls into the utility, um, complaining about, how, how bill complaints, things like that, because when we see what, what we're using on a consistent basis, it helps the utility to, to, to kinda head off some of those phone calls coming in, so. I also wanna point out, we, we, we talk about the leak alerts, we take it a step further, we actually allow the user, the utility customer, to set up alerts to be emailed, so if, if they don't have to, you know, have time to log on to the web portal, they can go into their alert preferences and be emailed when we, we have notified continuous usage. So, you know, if, if I wanna be notified every day, I can set the notification frequency to email me every day when a leak, you know, when I, when I get a leak notification, so that way I can be proactive versus waiting thirty-five days or thirty days, get my water bill, the water is, is extremely uh, high, uh, the bill is high, um, and, and we can kinda head off those and hopefully reduce phone calls to the utility as well. I mentioned the exceeded water budget, we take that day of week average sample, and uh, if I have a, a certain percentage that, that I, you know, threshold where I wanna be notified, I can set that as well. Another thing we do, um, to, to kinda help the utility out, is when we alert the customer via email or just in general, when they log on to their, their account, the first thing they're gonna see, if they've got any type of continuous leak, intermittent leak, or daily water budget alert, is they're gonna come up with a similar screen like this, and it's gonna ask them to acknowledge that they've got those alerts or to cancel. If they acknowledge, we timestamp that they acknowledge that they got those alerts, and, and you'll see here to the right, this, this column here, um, in this, in this example, they acknowledged on August the twenty-second of two thousand and twelve, if they hit cancel, the next time they log in, it's gonna come up again, so either have to acknowledge or cancel, but we know they saw it. So, for the utility, you know, purposes, if, if a user were to call in, they would have verification that they did know that they have received some type of leak alert, and if they had not addressed the, the concern, whether it be a leaking, a flapper valve in the toilet, a leaky faucet, at least the utility was proactive in, in notifying them that that has happened. Uh, the last thing I wanna show here is, is the compare consumption, if I wanted to, to look at my consumption for this year or current year or two thousand and twelve versus two thousand and eleven, I could do that. So I'm gonna show here, March one of two thousand and twelve versus March one of two thousand and eleven. And you can see here how my consumption patterns have changed from year to year, so my blue bar would show two thousand and twelve in this case, uh, the yellow bar would show my consumption for two thousand and eleven, as I scroll across, you'll see that highlighted on the graph there. So, in this example, it, some months I use more in two thousand and twelve, some months I use more in two thousand and eleven. And we also track the temperature and precipitation as well. Any, any questions about the portal? All right?
I'm, I'm excited about this. I'm, I'm very fired up, I, this is the reason that we put, we put these meters in, it wasn't really, and I know there's other reasons for the meter, but to me, for the end user and for the end result of what we can get, this is what it's about, because this is a much, as big a part of conservation as many of the things that we can do, because leaks can happen, and they happen every day, and you gotta know about it, and when you know, when you learn about it, when you get that seven hundred dollar water bill, it's too late.
Absolutely.
That's not good for anybody, for them, for them, for us, uh, because if we're truly, if there truly was wasted, you know, fifty thousand gallons, that's fifty thousand gallons, you know, that's wasted, so I'm, I'm very excited about this.
Good deal.
Other questions for them? Okay, Ms. Farmer and then Mr. Alexander?
I also am excited about it, I, just to have a couple of questions.
Sure.
People that don't have the AMI meters can't utilize this or tap into, so what's your answer gonna be when someone calls in, is when do I get my new meter?
I don't, I don't think I can, we can answer those specific dates, I mean, we're still two years out of complete implementation of the AMRs, you know, that was a five-year rollout program and that, and that's where we're at, so we're still looking at two thousand and fifteen, but I think it's important enough that we allow those people that do have it access and be able to, to use this, and as people come on, they can also access their information. And, and, and that's another reason we're here today, we're recommending implementing this software.
You do have a plan, you do have a plan for the rest of?
Yes, sir.
Implementation, so if someone was, in the next ninety days, you could tell them, or you could tell them it's, you're still out there.
Right. So.
Okay.
We would like that.
Mr. Alexander? You said a couple of questions, did I, okay, I wanna make sure I didn't interrupt you, I'm sorry.
I may have, but that's.
Okay. Mr. Alexander?
For me as well, this is a very big deal, I've been asking and asking for you guys, and it said that this programming's not ready and things like that, I, it, it just became very necessary, when we look at our droughts and people wanna conserve water, they're not, they don't have the tools to do so, they call into the water department and the person's already spoke to another twenty, thirty people, and they're, for customer service to get, to increase, we're gonna have to take the load off of these people, and this is one way, the voice system is the other way, and then less problems is a, is a fantastic way, this is very good. I would suggest that the City of San Angelo purchase the URL, or URLs, and or, here goes, mywaterusage.info, dot I-N-F-O, and mywaterbill.info, because it's really easy to remember, mywaterbill.info, bam, that pop, the login screen comes up, it's a redirect, and it puts it started into the City of San Angelo's, so we can find it, and you can just jump on any computer, uh, and get after it now. Part two, is there a mobile version?
That's a great question, so, so to look out on your iPad and, and things like that, absolutely, we are, um, actually, this year, we're coming out with a version, um, the reason, uh, you- The reason you can't view this current version is the way the graphs are in, because as you know, in flash and things like that. So, we are in process developing a mobile app, so...
Okay. Because half of all the internet activity now is on mobile.
So, you'll be able to view it on your iPhones and your iPad.
But the specific answer is not yet.
Not yet, which is fine. We really are way down the road here.
Absolutely.
I can wait for the other, and I'm sure it'll cost us a little money, but...
No, no, actually, you guys would, and that's part of the, once you, once you implement this, that's, that's part of the upgrade. That would happen.
Oh.
When you guys.
Excellent. Like that kind of stuff. All right.
Mr. Silvas.
This Neptune software is part of HD Supply Waterworks. Is that who we're dealing with? Is that who integrated these?
HD Supply is our distributor for the local area. Charlie is our, is our Neptune rep, but, but that's who, who you guys purchased from as a, as a city.
So, then the $35,000 price tag on it...
No, no.
Different issue. I looked at the wrong line. What was the price on this? Because I didn't see.
The software, which would normally cost $74,400, there's no charge for. The only charge that there's going to be for this, Mr. Silvas, is there's $11,900 annual hosting fee. All of this is hosted on their server somewhere, nothing the city has to buy, and another $2,900 annual web portal hostage, which is basically a, a maintenance for their stuff. So, we're $14,800 annually, and we don't have to pay for upgrades or the initial software.
And then you guys would be the, the backup. I mean, if something went wrong, you, you're the IT guys.
We, we had all, all IT administration. It prevents you from having to hire a, a database administrator, servers within the utility, and additional staff. So, we handle all of that for you.
And Ricky, I was really surprised to, to find out here that I thought the AMR conversion was way past the 50%. I didn't realize you were just there.
We're about 63%.
So, we are...and I thought he was even higher than that, but, you know, that's just... So, how does this convert over to the, how do you pick up the AMR readings? How do you guys do it? What, what happens?
All right. So, you have your, we call our AMI system, which is an advanced metering infrastructure system, which is our operational system that the utility uses. Readings come in through the data collectors, they're processed. Then every night, we package up that information and, and send it over to, to this system that I showed you today, which is our inside IQ customer web portal. So, that's a daily feed. So, we feed the information from our operational database to our customer web portal each night.
Okay. So, Ricky, is there a set number of years that we're going to be paying this $14,000? Is there a contract? Is there...
My understanding is that's for as long as we have the service.
So, just...
It's an ongoing yearly fee.
Is there a contract that we're signing?
Yes.
But no number, no specific number of years?
Unless there's some reason that the city should choose not to do it anymore.
And that states it in the contract? We can just drop?
Yeah, yeah, right. I mean, this is something that is a yearly, annual thing, just like you're buying annual maintenance for any product. If you decide that's not what you want, then it, you know, it's, it's cut at that time.
But, you know, what Paul mentioned was that URL, isn't it going to be a link onto the San Angelo, Texas.us?
Correct. What, what would happen is you would, you would, you could go to the San Angelo utility website and have a, a link there that you clicked on to view your usage, and it would direct them to whatever URL that you guys chose. We would point it to, to our servers, but they would see that View My Water Bill or what it, dot com or whatever it wanted to, you guys wanted to have.
That's another one, good one. Yeah.
So...
That's something they can memorize and go.
Okay. Mr. Morrison?
Let me explain where I'm coming from here. I was against these automated meters when they were first introduced, and I voted against them every time I had an opportunity. And in my own full opinion, I think they've done nothing but caused bad readings. I think they've cost our water users a tremendous amount of extra money, and I think they've created tremendous problems for our water department. And I've got the emails to back this up. So, I just give you that, just to give you an idea of, of where I am. And obviously, I was the lone vote on this because everybody else agreed with it. But I don't like them, I don't want them, and I'd rather go back to where we were. That said, when this program was sold to us, that was one of the main things that was spoken of, is that we will have all of this information, we will be able to see all of this information, and when there is a leak in anybody's house, we've got this in city, and we will be able then to notify our citizens that they're having excessive leaks, that there's water being used. And this was all sold to us as part of the program. Now, we understand it's going to cost our water customers an additional $14,800 a year just to have this service, when it was already sold to us as part of the original package. So, I, I don't have much use for this program. I have it from the beginning and still don't. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Morrison? I did have two questions. I'm sorry.
All right, here we go.
I passed too late. I'm talking. The question being is, the report, you say you could go back a year on, on your home and look at your comparative bill, what it was the year before, how you're doing. What if I didn't own that home, or I had renters in that home? Are you going to be able to give me that previous history, minus whoever name it was that lived there before? Are you able to give that previous history?
The history portion of this will, this software will store three years of information, and, and I'm not sure if I'm going to get to your question. But as history is built, I mean, when you first sign on, you're not going to have last year's history. I mean, as you build history, you will be able to see it.
So, you're not loading previous history? You're starting from the get-go?
Well, that's an option for a fee that we can load up to six months, I think. Or, well, we can, depending on what you want it to cost.
I think the real question, what she's trying to find is, will you, will you store and maintain and have access to the history of that meter?
Yeah.
Not my history, but that meter.
That's a good question. We, we actually, there's an associate-disassociate process that happens. And what, what we have found is most utilities only want the homeowner to have a visual representation of their usage, not the previous individual. So, we, we, once you sign up, we only show when the utility shows that you were effective in that house at that particular time. So, once they do their move-in, move-out transaction, whatever they do in the billing system, that's, that's when, when your account becomes active and when you start seeing usage. So, you would not see the prior individual that lived in that house's usage. And the reason, it, it's more of a security risk. You start looking at, if you know that individual, you look at patterns, when, when they were at home, when they were not at home. So, that, that's, that's, that's the reason behind most of that.
And the privacy.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify.
Okay, Mr. Alexander?
I want to agree with Mr. Morrison, and I want to disagree with Mr. Morrison. I'm going to agree with Mr. Morrison that we don't really know what happened because we didn't have an investigation. We don't have something we can look at and say, well, this is where the problems were. This is why we had these water bill problems. We don't have that. So, I agree with him on that. This is not your fault. But I'll tell you, I like to always let people know what really is going on. And Neptune came in in October and did an audit, a procedural audit with the water department about how their system integrates with ours. And I think there's nine components to a water bill. Is that right? Is there nine? So, there's a lot of components to a water bill. Neptune's one. And they reviewed with our city staff how all this works to make sure we're doing our part right and that we're not messing up. So, I know you guys came in and did that, and it may, it may not solve problems. I'm not sure about that part. But it, it's not necessarily your fault. There's a, it's a very complex model, and I just want to make sure that the citizens know that this is a, it's a difficult deal and, and, but we don't know what happened.
Okay. Mr. Morrison?
And that still does not address the fact that we were told three years ago, when we voted for these, these automatic meters, that this would be something that would be provided to our water users by our city. And now, we're being told, you can get it, but it's going to be for a fee. We're going to, there's a $15,000 annual fee that our water department will have to pay, which will be passed on to our water users. This was sold to us, that it would be included in the automatic meters. Now, we find out it's going to cost us more. And if we want other apps, then there is an additional fee, and it, it never ends.
Is that true? The last part is not true, right?
So, that's my problem. We've already been sold this, this, this concept once, and now we're being sold it again.
Now, and I will address the $15,000. There is, you have the choice not to, to have Neptune host it, but, and to purchase your server or whatever it may be, but, but you're going to look at, you know, a lot more money than that, but...
But we were told initially that the city would have all of this information, they would have the information on hand. This was one of the wonderful selling points of this to start with. We've got this information. We can look on a daily basis at all the water usage, and if you've got a water problem and a water leak, we're going to notify that water customer and let him know that there is a water leak. But now, we find out that this is going to cost us money.
Hang on.
I don't remember that.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
I remember being available. It's going to be available.
They're answering questions, and he's doing, he's doing a good job. What he, what... There's a difference here between getting the information, having the information, and where the information is. And, and a big part of what, what you're buying here is putting it on their server, having them do the upkeep, having them take care of everything, so that your IT people don't have to find a place on a server to put it. You don't have to have the storage capacity to keep it, and you don't have to pay for the upkeep of it. And so, this is, there's, there's a slight parsing of what Mr. Morrison is describing here. We are getting the information as part of what we bought.
Correct.
Now, what we're talking about is where is that going, information going to reside?
Yeah, we're taking it to the next level, basically.
And are we willing to pay for that to reside somewhere else so that it doesn't put extra burden on our own infrastructure resources and our own IT people? So, I, I mean, I think we're okay there. Now, let me try to, to move us to, this says, "And any action in connection thereto." I'm looking for a motion to approve this, okay? And to allow Mr. Dixon to move forward with this process. I have a motion and a second to approve and move this thing forward. Do I have any further comment or question from council?
I have one last one.
Mr. Silvas?
Just for clarification. Back in June, June 1, 2010, we entered a contract with HD Supply Waterworks. Was this part of that contract? Was this Neptune software part of that automatic meter read system that we had implemented?
I believe that the software was part of the program for the utility or our usage. I cannot speak of if the customer portal portion was part of that agreement.
Mr. Dane?
It's, it's, I think it's important that we clarify, you're not, you're not being charged for software at this point.
No.
We're utilizing software. What we're being charged for is...
Hosting.
Let's, let's clarify that. Would you cover that again?
Yeah, so, so the, the annual charge is hosting and maintenance. So, that, that covers your, and I, and I, I don't know if, and I'll kind of read, so I don't, I don't leave anything off. That is three years of, of, of storage, which is, you're talking about billions of rolls of data, ability to have alerts sent to the customer. It also, we handle all that database administration, you know, instead of you had going out and hiring a, a database administrator, paying him, you know, typically, those guys are $100, $100,000 a year jobs. We handle that. We handle all database maintenance and management, whether it be, you know, if routine maintenance, something were to go down, we handle that. We also host that information on, on servers for you to, to, to keep you from having to do that, as well as any phone support from the utility calling in to, to Neptune for assistance and, and help, and any free, any software upgrades in the future, such as mobile applications and things like that, so...
Mayor, I think it'd be accurate to say, this is, this proposal is a privatized methodology or has a, a methodology consistent with a privatized service. In other words, instead of us doing it, we are contracting for others to provide the service.
It's called software as a service, is, is what that, what that is.
Well, since Will Wildy's not here to answer my question, maybe Tony Fox will remember. Tony, do you remember this software being a part of the automatic meter read system when we first were implementing them? I mean, Tony seems to be one of the senior members there, and she is in charge of billing.
Good morning. Unfortunately, I was not involved with the negotiations that were going on at that time.
I'm still lost on why you're asking about software. The software, the software is being provided. You're not paying for it. The software is a $74,000...
$74,000.
That you're not paying for.
And I guess my...
What you're paying for is the hosting of it on a server. So, you're not buying software. The software is provided. And so, I don't understand if you don't understand...
I'm trying to get clarification of what Mr. Morrison is saying, that this automatic meter reading system that we are implementing, that we are at 63% into, had this, had the capability to do this, what we're doing here, the Neptune software, what it's doing, what it's going to be capable of, that the AMR system not, was it not going to be able to give us this information, is my simple question.
It, it gives that information currently, but the problem is, it's hard for, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Dixon, to respond to 37,000 customers with his staff. So, this just allows them to be able to, to notify them of that happening.
What, what you're paying for is utilization of the information in the most efficient and the most cost-restrained manner. That's what you're paying for. I mean, you're paying for the utilization of the information, not for getting the information. The information is there. So, you're not buying something you already bought. The information is there. What you're doing now is saying, we'd rather they have it, they keep up with it, they hold on to it, and they update it, and, and we not have to bring that into our IT process. So, that's, I mean, there's just a room to...
We couldn't do this on our own.
Yep.
Why couldn't a citizen that wanted this information call the water department and say, "I want to know how many gallons I've used since you were supposed, according to when it was sold to us, we were going to make those automatic notifications. If we're not doing that now, why couldn't our citizen call and say, 'I am Joe Blow. I live at this address.' Would you look at your system and tell me how many gallons I used on February the 3rd? Could you not do that?"
You certainly could.
Then why are we spending $15,000 a year?
Because we don't have the personnel to handle that many...
Because you would spend another $40,000 for the person that you're asking to handle that instead of 15.
That's a cheap person.
Mr., Mr., Ms. Farmer and then Mr. Alexander.
I...
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, I remember it the, the way that you had described. I remember Harold telling us that we would have the ability to do exactly what you're saying, once we get to that point. You're offering us that ability. We can say yes or no. And that's what was, the way I remember it, that's what was presented. But I think Mr. Silvas' question could easily be answered if we went back at the time the AMI discussion was and look at the minutes and see what is there.
I'll be glad to check that.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to accept this and to allow Mr. Dixon to move forward with it. And so, I'm going to move us to public comment and then call for a vote. So, public comment on this item.
Jim Turner again. One of the things you have to remember is we're also right in the middle of redoing the entire city website. So, in a way, this is, we either have them set up this portal for us that will eventually become part of the new city website, or we'd have to take and contract this out, if we want this information to be available on the internet. The second thing is, in a lot of ways, it's, this seems to me that this is also very similar to the voice response system that you just approved, in that you have an automated system, this time it's on the internet, the previous one was on a telephone system, dealing with routine customer matters without having to have somebody, a human, actually do the routine stuff, that a machine can actually do pretty well and do better. We have had a number of stumbling blocks, a lot of respedias in doing the transition from what we did have to what we have now. There's a lot that needs to be addressed in that, a lot that needs to be learned, but what we're paying for here seems to me is a way to access the data that was already part of the contract on an ongoing basis, and in next year or three years, when we redo the website again, we may decide to roll this into an overall contract, through that one contractor's responsible for all the internet presence, including this. But that's, this is a good way to do it right now, especially since you've already let the contract for the website redesigned that didn't include this. If you're gonna have this on the website, you either have a company like Neptune do it, or you go get an outside company to do it, or you spend a lot of money to develop that capability in-house that doesn't exist right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public input? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Two nays. Okay, so you have a four to two vote. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna take us into break, it's 12:12, and so we, I, I need to confer a little bit to get an idea of how, what kind, how many items we have, and how long we'll be in executive committee, and I'll try to give you some idea of when to come back. But it's gonna, it, it's gonna be, oh, I'm gonna say 1:30, without getting any, any further knowledge than that. Mr. Mayor, do you have an idea of how many items are on the executive committee?
Two.
Two. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna stick by that 1:30 is when I think we'll start again, and so we will start again at 1:30 with item number 12 and move forward from then. Thank you. Okay, you guys, let me read this language, please. Don't, don't leave, don't anybody leave before I get through, or I'll lose my quorum. This is, uh, moving us into executive session, it's 12:14 PM. This is the executive session, moving into executive session under the provision of the government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to the Requirement That Meetings Be Open, Section 551.071, To Consult With An Attorney On A Matter Related To The Texas Disciplinary Rules Of Professional Conduct At The State Bar Of Texas, Related To Our Landfill, and then an, an item under 551.072, To Deliberate Purchase, Exchange, Lease Or Value Of Real Property, and, and under item number 551.087, To Discuss And Offer A Financial Or Other Incentive To A Company That We're Conducting Economic Development Negotiations With. Okay, we can move into executive session, thank y'all. Folks, I'm gonna skip to item number 16, call the meeting back to order, it's 1:16, and do this item on the discussion and consideration of a petition seeking annexation to San Angelo City Limits Of Certain Properties Situated Immediately West And Southwest Of San Angelo, Presentation By Our Interim Senior Planner, Jeff Hens.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. As you stated, this is to consider a petition for possible annexation, we wouldn't actually be annexing any property by action that you took today, this would only direct staff to look into that, and I'll bring that back to you. We'd also ask if you are inclined to go ahead and approve this petition, to adopt the schedule with it as well, that would have the hearings required for that, as you stated for that. This property is directly west of some property that was finalized for annexation on March 5th, and I've got some maps here, I can highlight that to you. The proposed timetable for this, the first public hearing, if the petition were accepted today, would be for May 7th. Second public hearing would be on the 21st of May, and the first reading, which is spelled wrong, my apologies, would be for June 4th, 2013, and the final reading of an ordinance annexing the property could be as early as June 18th. Again, this is the property here, this is a survey of it, the property that was recently annexed is here, you may know, the Boulevard Apartments, they're being constructed currently, or Twin Buttes, I think is their current name, are just north of this property. This is an addition of the Prestonwood subdivision that we've had in the past. There's an unannexed area of the city over this way as well, and I've got a map here that kinda shows where Sherwood Way is, you'll find the Sam's Club up this way, actually the Sam's Club is here, and there's the Wendy's and the other establishments here. An aerial photo is much better, there's some storage units and other things in the area, but this'll just be a continuation of the neighborhood if counsel were inclined to go ahead and accept this petition for annexation.
So we annexed the piece just inside it?
Correct. If you can see where the city limit line runs here, the maps haven't been updated yet, but it'll leave a little hole over here, this property is currently not in the city limits, but this area here, where I'm moving the mouse over, was annexed as of March 5th, yes.
Okay.
Jeff, how high is that foot, that, that level there?
Uh, the scale on this, I think I did one inches at 1,000 feet, I'm not sure...
That's 1,000 feet?
One inch on the map is 1,000 feet, I'm not sure how high the plane was, was flying, but...
I don't like 35,000, or 26,000, I like this. So when we talk about 35,000 foot level, that's a little too high for me.
Twenty-two thousand miles. I think that's what that is.
I just wanna clarify, keep the scale there, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Glad you clarified that.
So if, if there's any questions, I can certainly address those now, but...
Would you guys like to direct staff to start looking into the annexation of this property?
Yes.
We also asked you to include the, that proposed timetable as well.
Would you...
Need a motion?
Would someone make a motion to...
Would you go back to the timetable?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to, Ms. Farmer, we have a motion to...
Approve the existing timetable that is proposed by staff, and to approve the annexation.
Approve looking into the annexation, yes.
I guess one thing I should point out that I failed to, my apologies, there's no special meetings recorded by this council, these will all be during regular council dates, so you won't have to schedule any special hearings for this as well.
Okay, I have a motion to give staff permission and direction to look into the annexation of the, of the land that he showed us, and using this proposed timetable. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a second for Mr. Silva, so I have other comments from counsel?
Just keep that aerial foot level, you know?
Okay, do I have any public input on this item? Let me call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's item 16. Again, I'm, I'll go back to...
Can I just, can I ask a related question? That little pocket that's in there, and I, I know AJ brought it up before, is there something we can do to approach the current owner?
You mean this, this pocket here?
Yes.
Yeah, the, these annexations here that we've done here, and the one that was just approved now, were, under Texas state law, if it's less than a half a mile wide and there's less than three registered voters, they can go ahead and petition the city, and it's a faster process. I, as counsel, you could say, you know, we wanna just go ahead and annex that, and it's a much longer process, but you could do it, the alternative would be if someone, if the property owner came forward, it would be a similar process to these recent annexations here, in terms of the timeframe.
I guess my point is, could, could someone from staff approach?
Uh, we, we could certainly, we've got the mailing address, we could certainly, you know, address a letter to them and state that areas around them are being annexed and, and do it that way. We'd have to look into the legality of it, it would be more of an informational letter, we couldn't force them to unless, you know, you directed us to, but we could certainly send them something about, you know, what's going on in this area.
Mr. Alexander, aren't you familiar with the landowner?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here trying to get, trying to find the email that Bob Hicks sent me saying that our church, Community Hills Christian Church, sold that land about two months ago, and my dad, his trustee, signed it, it's now a new owner. So, that's what I know, I, he told me who it is, and I can't find the email.
Okay. Well, I think we might could get this done via either Mr. Alexander or possibly Ms. Farmer, where they would just write a note and ask if there's interest.
Correct.
We've annexed property all around you, do you have any interest in being annexed?
It's much faster if the property owner approaches and seeks to be annexed, unless, you know, the city council could say, "We wanna annex that property," it's, it's just about the time.
Yeah, I'm not really, I'm not really after telling them, I'm, I'm trying to suggest that they look into it. That's, you understand that...
They had to, they had to request it, not, not the city initiative, they would...
They'd have to request it. When we do as staff, someone comes to us, in this example, they'd given us a meets and bounds description and a plat of the property, so a survey, I'll have to go out there and draw something up, and then a letter of intent saying, "I'd like to have this property that I've described here annexed into the city limits," then it's just notarized, and at that point, we send out the publications and bring it before you for action.
So, no one can send a friendly letter of just, just to let you know, this is what's happening?
We, we can check into it to see, certainly. That's not a problem.
Okay, it's just not good having a, a donut hole in there.
Agreed.
As a council member of that district, I've noticed that we have annexed everything except that small pocket.
That's why I don't understand why that's a problem.
Well, neither.
We're not, we're not threatening you with annexation, but wonder if you would just consider coming forward?
In terms of, you know, development of the property, if it was, you know, you mentioned it was recently transacted, in order to, you know, have city sewer and water, the subdivision ordinance states that you shall request annexation, so development of the property may be a little more, you know, problematic without that annexation, certainly.
Okay. There's Mr. Schneeman. I'm trying to get to 1:30, folks, like, I know the Myers are here, I'm trying to get to 1:30 because that's when I said we would kick off again, so anybody that wants to be here for item 12 can be here, so I'm gonna try to take items that don't affect people to kill, to get time taken care of, so we'll get after it. And Mr. Schneeman, would you come walk us through number 17, the consideration of adopting a resolution ratifying the filing of an application by the City of San Angelo Development Corporation with the Texas State Energy Conservation Office?
Good afternoon. I don't actually have a presentation on this, I think all the information was in your packets. Basically, a member of the COSA DC Board became aware of the availability of some grant funds through the State Energy Conservation Office to install auxiliary power systems, if you will, solar energy. We looked at a number of buildings throughout the city, our initial interest was in doing this on the roof of the Business Resource Center to offset our, our own utility costs on that building. That building proved not to be a particularly good candidate because of the size of the roof, the equipment that was on the roof, other structures around, so we then let the consultant look at a number of buildings, and they came up with the Spur Arena being a, a good candidate for this. The state has about $2 million available, they're looking at doing grants in the amount of about $250,000 if you get the full grant, so there would be about eight of these, so we're in, it should be a fairly tight competition, I guess. One of the main things was that the grant needed to be submitted by the 15th of March, so we could not get it to council before that. We discussed it with COSA DC, went ahead and, and submitted the grant application. We're not obligated, even if we are awarded the grant, we're not obligated to accept the grant. So, if we were to get the $250,000, there would be about $62,000 in matching funds. Estimates are that we would save about $1,000 per month in utility fees. This is a behind-the-meter connection, so if we generate more power than we use, it goes back into the grid, we get a credit for that. So even though the Spur Arena may not use the entire amount that could be produced here, it could offset some other utility costs at the rodeo grounds. Again, we're not obligated to accept the grant if we're approved, and there are some questions we'd still like to ask.
Okay, and you're not, the only thing I haven't heard you talk about is that electric vehicle charging station, so tell me more.
The consultant told us, and I specifically asked about that, the consultant tells us that in order to maximize the available eligibility points for the grant, we needed to include at least one of those. What they're doing with a lot of cities is they're doing, Austin, for example, they're doing nothing but covered parking with solar panels on the top, and nothing but charging stations. Those apparently look really good to the Energy Conservation Office. We're, we're looking at a little different arrangement, I don't think there are a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of demand for electric vehicle charging stations at the rodeo grounds at this time. However, it may be that the rodeo grounds will, over time, buy some electric vehicles for use on the grounds, and it may turn out to be a viable option, but it's, it's there.
What's the cost of that station?
I, I don't have a breakout of that station specifically.
And additionally, if, if, if we're only awarded half of this, then we're not committed to having to spend the whole thing and us make the difference, right?
That's correct. One of the first things we did was discuss this with the city attorney and have her look at all the paperwork, and we came to the conclusion, we can turn it down flat if we don't wanna do it. That's the only reason that we went forward without, without preapproval of council, was because we had that option.
Okay, questions on Mr. Morrison?
Too many of these grants we're looking at have so many hooks in them. We need to be very, very careful here, and y'all need to really consider this, that you know what you're getting into.
I agree with you, sir. That's, that's, again, that's why we, the first thing we did was go to the city attorney and say, "Look, what's our obligation here if we do get this?"
Other questions on the, on the presentation? Is there a... Let me look, 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 adopting a resolution ratifying, so are we going to adopt a resolution, or are we going to give instruction to not to accept it, not to pay the $62,000 related to...
I think they filed the application, so...
What, what's this, $62,000?
And the ratification of the application first went to COSA DC. So COSA DC's recommendation to you is in furtherance of the submission of the application.
Which is already done.
Yes.
Hang on, but I mean, again, at the end of the day, you can ratify something they've done, you can also, though, he's made it very clear, that they did it to meet a guide, to meet a date deadline. And if you, if you said, "I just don't really want, we don't, we don't want to participate in this, we know you, you know, okay, we ratify the fact that you sent the application in, but that's the end of it, we don't want to participate."
So therefore, you're not going to then approve, or so to speak, ratify the filing of the application, and you would, in doing, not ratifying it, then we would have to withdraw it?
At which point, we would withdraw the application.
I make a motion, we table the indefinitely, can we not the agenda item? Not table it, but just don't do anything.
Well, you, you either ratify it so that it goes through the process...
What do you need?
Or you refuse to rat, he wants us to ratify it or refuse to ratify it. Mayor?
My, my take is that we ratify it, and then if we get the, get the grant, at that point, then we decide whether we take it or not.
When we have all our questions answered, and everybody's comfortable with it.
Right now, there's a whole lot of questions, so...
Okay.
I will make a motion that we...
That's what I'm looking for.
Adopt the resolution as presented, only for the filing, for the filing of the...
And that's, that's all I'm asking for.
We would always come back to council to accept the grant money.
Perfect.
Adopt a resolution ratifying the filing of an application. You make that motion? Motion's made. I have a second from Ms. Farmer. So I have a motion and a second that we, that we do adopt a resolution ratifying the filing of an application. Okay, now, Mr. Morrison?
Have we spent any money yet?
No, sir.
Will we spend any money before we make a decision on this?
No, sir.
Okay.
Did you tell us how much it's gonna save us, how much energy is this gonna generate?
It's about $1,000 a month, is the estimate.
So five and a half year payout?
Correct, for our, for our portion of the investment.
But this a thousand, is this savings of $1,000 electric per month, and it's also perhaps even selling back to the grid also, that we don't know how much that might be on a...
That, that payback was, was calculated based on about a 100 KW system, so that would be the sort of break even, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, probably, we're not probably gonna generate any more than that, so...
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve and, and sentiment that we, that we understand that we get to look at it before we make a final decision, so, but anyway, the motion and the second, approve the ratification. Do I have any further points from, or questions or comments from counsel? Do I have public comment on this item? Okay, call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 16 and 17.
Let's pay our electric bill.
Did we pay our electric bill?
Everybody in the audience is fanning themselves, and I, it's hot.
I feel cold.
You're sick.
I'm done. I'm, I'm, I'm hot. You're cold to me, I'm cold.
Cold. Cold, hot, okay.
I'm just watching the audience, I'm not the only one fanning themselves, it's...
Okay, item number 12, they can, they'll look for us, make sure that things... Item number 12 is the first public hearing in consideration of introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 12 Exhibit A related to PD 07-01, and this is the Meyer and Rosser Project, and presentation by our senior planner, Jeff Hens.
Good afternoon. As you stated, this is the first introduction and reading of an ordinance. This is a request for approval of a zone change from Ranch and Estate to a planned development district that would allow for a campground and RV park as allowed in PD 0701 approved in March of 2007. This is at 3512 Ben Ficklin Road, about 200 feet east from the intersection of Ben Ficklin Road. Road and South Bryant Boulevard. We did send five notices out, one that were required by law to the property owners within 200 feet. One of those was returned in favor and was included with the background packet along with several other letters we'd received. This is a map of the one that was returned in favor. The 200-foot kind of runs like this.
I'm sorry, Jeff, repeat that again, in favor or...
Yeah, this is the one that was returned in favor, the five we'd sent out. There were a couple in this area that were not returned to us at all. Just a map of the area, kind of to show you where it is. South Bryant Boulevard runs this way through town. The Century Terrace subdivision is this way. On South Chadburn Street heads out towards the base along the river here. A little bit closer view of the zoning, you can see there's some commercial zoning in this area, office commercial zoning, as well as residential and ranch and estate back near the river here. Heading north into the subdivision, you get RS1 and some other commercial properties along South Bryant Boulevard. Looking at an aerial photo of the property, again, you can see it is farmland at this time. The applicants are here and can certainly explain more their intent for the project, but this would be intended to be a type of a phase two or a first phase if they're already approved. If you can see the PD on here, and I've got another map later on that'll elaborate that a little bit better. There's already an approved PD on the book that allows for a campground and RV park on this property, as well as some leased property from the city in this area as well. This has simply applied those same rules and those same regulations to this development here, a little bit closer to Ben Ficklin Road and then Bryant, just off the screen here, but it would apply it to this approximately 10 acres of property here. Here's a couple photos of it. Ben Ficklin Road in this area is not utilized very much. There's no development in this area at all. There's a couple billboards and some other properties. The Reteroyo is just up here. There's a drainage that runs through there. This is looking east across the subject property. If your eyes are good enough and the TVs work well, you can see in the distance some phone lines here. That is South Chadburn Street across the property. The property as a whole is approximately 75 acres. The leased property from the city is around 20 acres or so, if I believe. In considering this, the council may approve the zone change as presented, remand this back to Planning Commission for further discussion or deny the zone change. Staff recommended approving this amendment to PD 07-01. There is a site plan, which I'll get into later on. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request by a vote of five to one at their meeting on March 18th. The area is generally undeveloped. There's a few residences in the area. In terms of the placement within the city, this is a really isolated area. There's not a lot of development in this area whatsoever. And given, you know, what we went through this morning with the joint meeting with the Planning Commission, you may be wondering, you know, why this is here before you today. This is the one that we've had an application for that meets the intent of the current ordinance. It is for tourist boarding. There's allowances for some horse riding on this property as well within the PD 07-01. Staff has found with the current regulations we have in place, this particular project is meeting the intent of the current ordinance. These are the criteria for approval for a zone change. As with all the other zone changes, staff did find these to be true for this particular request. The traffic capabilities of the area were discussed with Tech dot, as both of those right-of-ways that are near the property are Tech dot right-of-ways on Bryant and Chadbourne. The main entrance to this will be off of the Ben Ficklin Bryant side. Tech dot had no complaints about either side when I talked with them about this. Staff did find this to be the highest and best use of the property. A lot of this property is within the floodplain. It's not to say that development of properties in the floodplain is impossible altogether, but in terms of doing it, there's more things to go through in additional permits you'll need to, you know, place permanent structures on the property in such a manner that would, you know, really make this profitable. Staff did find a campground and RV park on this property to be very useful. Temporary vacationing and recreational use fits with our current vision plan of the area for open space and neighborhood in this area, as well as the zoning ordinance definition of what a campground is at this particular time. We found little effect would occur to the natural environment and development patterns of the area as well, given the isolation within the community and from the properties nearby. The PD has already approved 800 feet east on the same property as we looked at on the map before. In terms of zoning and predictability of consistent development, that's really the goal of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. Staff found that a PD, in this case, is the most predictable and most consistent, and probably the best way to go about doing this. The same rules and regulations will be applied on this particular property, the 10 acres subject to this request. They've been in place since 2007 on the city leased property and the other property that was shown on the map. There is a specific site plan with this particular ordinance that must be adhered to. Amendments to that would require approval from Planning Commission and eventually this board. We found this property to be unique from any other request for this type of use that staff has seen so far. And here is the site plan. There's a much better one in your digital packet that you can zoom in and play around with, but basically Ben Ficklin Road is here. This will be, the applicants are here and can explain their intent, of course, but it would be paved and have to meet all the permitting and fire code requirements. There's an office laundromat here and a type of pavilion here, a recreation area, as well as the proximity of the Reteroyo and the Contra River. We really found this an ideal spot in the community to have a temporary stay campground. This would not be a permanent living situation whatsoever. With that, if there's any questions that you have of me, I'll be happy to try and address those as best I can.
Questions for Mr. Hens regarding the presentation?
I've got a quick one. Jeff, on one of the slides, I noticed there's a piece of land that's adjacent to the river. I guess it was Zone PD, right there, right there, that one right there? Who owns that?
That's, the city owns that, and they have a lease for that particular property.
Definitely so. So then they...
And then this piece of, there's a property line that runs through here. This part of the PD is on their property at, you know, at this time, and there's a mobile home out here that's allowed to be placed there to be used as a, only as an office for this particular development. Now, there is a, this has been before you several times over the course of the last five or six years. If the site is not fully developed and it gets a cutoff date, I think it was recently extended to 2016, if the site is not fully developed, the mobile home must be removed. But if the site is developed, it is allowed to remain there as a living quarters for the folks taking care of this particular park.
But this would strictly be an RV park?
Correct. This would be a campground RV park.
Campground, yeah.
And the previous PD allows for some horse boarding activities to occur near the river and the Reteroyo up this way, as well as some type of cabins as well are also included in the PD that could be developed. I believe it calls for this area. I don't have a slide of the old site plan.
So who owns the property where that subject, where...
That's their property as well. Right now, it's agricultural use. There's some fields, and they can elaborate more on, you know, what they're doing with that.
But they own that.
They own the property up to this, you see where this black line kind of runs through here? Ends up here, yeah. They own the property up to that.
So we're just giving them access to, if approved, to that 10 acre?
Right. Ben Ficklin Road runs through here, and there's a driveway they've got there. I may have a photo of that. The driveway is just off the screen here, but they've got access, and this is the house and mobile home that's out there.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of Jeff? Would you like to talk to the proponents? Questions for them, or...
This has been quite some time in coming. Was it '07, '09?
Yes, '07.
'07, since it first initiated. Is there a timeframe?
With the zone change, it's on the books forever unless they were to come and request a zone change to something else, but this is on, it's a zone change, and anybody, they could, you know, sell it to me if I bought that property, and I'd have to follow the exact same set of rules, but there is no timeframe for expiration on this.
I am going to make a motion for approval of this item.
Okay.
As listed.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Do I have further questions from council?
Are you hearing from anybody out here?
Absolutely. Don't worry. Okay. Do I have anything else from council? Okay, now, I do want to bring up public input on this item. Go ahead. If there are going to be several speak, it'd be nice if you'd come up close to the front so that as the next, as one person leaves, you can come in right behind them, okay?
This is that petition that we did, and I just have two. Can you do that for me? There's one for all of them, yeah.
Hello, I'm Carrie Jackson, and I am homeowner at Century Park. And we have a petition, copy of it for each of you to look at. There were 44 property owners that have signed the petition.
Just a moment. Because he has the opportunity to kind of show us where y'all are.
Okay.
Do you mind if we don't let him do that? Jeff, will you back that up to show us where Century Park is?
We're right there.
Okay.
So we are within the 1,200 feet from the planned development.
Okay.
And in this, we realize that there is already the approved planned development that was in 2006. And our concerns are, of course, property values that we talked about this morning with RV and campground sites close to homes. This is or could be, it's a different zoning type from the ranch and estate that it has been into the planned development. And the original planned development that was approved in 2006 has never been developed. So we have that as Ms. Farmer indicated from 2006. Nothing has been done until now, and so we're going to extend it and make it larger. It does not make a lot of sense to us. Anyway, that, I just, you have our petition that we had and the property owner's signatures on there, and then, of course, the maps behind it that show the proximity to us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next.
Yes, just a moment.
Okay.
Jeff. Thank you. My name is Peggy Rosser. Good morning, council. Good afternoon, council. Initially, we would like to publicly compliment A.J. Favre and Jeff Hens for their commitment to San Angelo. Their dedication to their job is evidenced through the remarkable level of work that they have consistently exhibited through this entire process. Thank you, Jeff and A.J. Today, we're requesting the council's approval to amend our current planned development, PD 07-01, which was passed in March of 2007. We want to amend the PD. I want to share just real quickly how it came to even exist. Carrie and I were members of the 2006 Leadership San Angelo class, and during one of those presentations, we were able to visit the Hummer House in Cristovalle. And Dan Brown at the Hummer House was saying, he said, "You know, I think that we, that San Angelo could really use another RV park." Now, remember, this was in 2006. And like the good ex-schoolteacher I am, I was sitting on the front row, and Carrie was on the back row with her friends, and I turned to her and I went, "We can do this." And the idea was born. We are not a flash in a pan. This has been our goal. It's been to build an RV park. This Google Earth picture shows the area from 2,000 feet. Notice the yellow lines. They mark the entire location. This parcel of land sits between South Bryant and South Chadbourne, and also between the Reteroyo and the South Contra River. As the Google Earth image is closer, the area marked in the red shows the current planned development, 07-01, boundaries that were approved in March of 2007. We are requesting that the current planned development, 07-01, as indicated by the blue line, be approved. This planned development amendment intersects the already approved planned development. This is the engineering plaque for that piece of land. This is the second drawing of it because we made some changes which were necessary to adhere to various regulations. This slide shows the approach to the park, which is ideal because it's very visible. The slide shows the entrance from the north as marked by the green lines. Notice, RVers will have a turning lane, which will enable ease of access to the entrance gate, and it's marked on this slide as well. When an RV is entering from the south, as indicated by the purple arrows, notice that there is ample area for them to turn and then to enter the park gate. That large pink arrow up near the top is an emergency entrance gate to the park, which is a requirement. Upon exiting the park, again, all the traffic is visible. If traveling north, the driver will be able to utilize the area prior to South Bryant to prepare to enter the northbound traffic flow as indicated by the blue arrows. When entering the traffic flow southbound, there is an area available for them to cross the northbound lane and join that traffic pattern. As has been visually noted, RVs entering and exiting the RV park will not be using Ben Ficklin Road and will not need to cross the bridge at the Reteroyo. Therefore, there will not be a need for the city to address widening that bridge. The park engineer has received verification that the water and sewer connections for the park are easily accessed on Ben Ficklin Road and of proper size to handle our park. The water and sewer connections for the park are the park owner's responsibility. Again, there will not be a need for the city to hire extra employees because of the park's connections to water and sewer. The approval of this amended PD will not, in and of itself, cause the city to hire additional fire, police, or city personnel. The South Bryant corridor is home to many other like businesses. Angelo RV is on the north. Cristovalle Estates is located just south of our property, on the corner of Chadburn Street and Cristovalle Road. Angelo RV Storage Only is just south of our property, along with Angelo Truck and RV and Riverbend Estates. South Contra RV and Mobile Home Park is just west of South Bryant. What Carrie is bringing to you all is our paperclip-together set of letters of support. I will address these letters of support, one at a time, by providing some quotes from them. Since the approval of the planned development, 07-01, passed in March of 2007, the Chamber of Commerce continues to support Contra River RV Resort. In his letter, Phil Neighbors says, "Due to its beautiful location, the permanent asset planned as Contra River RV Resort will fill a tourism need for years to come. Thank you for your careful consideration of this proposed planned development that will be a great asset to San Angelo." The next letter, in addition to Phil Neighbors, Pamela Miller with the San Angelo Convention and Visitors Bureau supports the project as well, and I quote her, "Obviously, the top priority for a convention and visitors bureau is to book hotel rooms. But as our city continues to grow, there is a growing demand for RV parks from a tourism standpoint. There are many tourists who stay strictly at campgrounds and not in hotels, and not having sufficient campgrounds in our city merely sends them to stay in another city. The snowbirds that we get from the north are a perfect example of this," she goes on. "Much of this business is currently going to Fredericksburg instead. We also received various event bidding specs that call for certain number of camping spaces. This is especially true in the areas of agricultural and equine tourism." The next letter is from Bill Brown with Angelo RV, and he supports the project. "I have been in the recreational vehicle business for several years here in San Angelo. The RV industry continues to steadily grow. Tourism is a big industry, and it brings increasing beneficial economic impact to those towns that..." those towns that cater to the RV lifestyle." Mr. Brown closes his letter with, "I believe it is in the planning, in the council's best interest, in San Angelo citizens' best interest, to approve the amendment to the current plan district for Concho River RV Resort." Next, local business owner, Triva Boyd, owner of Angelo Truck and RV, provides her support by saying, "We small businesses bring a significant amount of tax dollars and valuable services to customers that shop here, choose to vacation here, or are just passing through. I hope that you will seriously consider allowing Concho River RV Resort a chance to build their facility, thereby promoting another valuable small business to grow and thrive here." The next letter of support comes from Tom Thompson. He states his experience with current event planning by stating, "The future availability of hotel and RV space is becoming a common discussion topic at nearly every event planning meeting." He continues, "Any steps to help reduce these short-term issues will certainly benefit all of San Angelo as we grow the next few years." Yes, sir.
We have clear flavor on the letters. Please move forward with the next part of your presentation.
I will do that. The letters clearly support the fact that another RV park would be in the best benefit for San Angelo. We are ready to build, and today we seek your approval to amend our plan development, 0701, passed in March 2007. Thank you.
Thanks. A couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
The, you've had this dream for a while, and now you're reaching a point where you're trying to move forward with it. So tell me something about, you started in '07, this is '13. What gets you to the point that you're ready to pull the trigger? In other words, is this an exercise in, this is about to happen, or is this an exercise in, we're dealing with something that we're telling others to study, and it's not about to happen?
No, sir, it's about to happen.
So tell me about that.
The ecotomic climate, of course, is assisting this decision now, but we are all, the Rosser's and the Meyers are at a much stronger place financially to move forward on this.
But explain the move. It saves money. Utilities are closer to this site than the other. There's water under the other side. There's, there's problems.
Well, I, well.
Maybe, maybe you can't say that last part.
No. As we move forward, anytime you start this project, until you do engineering in your studies and learn, we're not contractors, we're not sewer and water utility people. The complications with building a first phase on the river, one, it's on a leased land, which is harder to receive funding for, and is restricted by banks whether or not you can fund a project on leased property. And in '07, there was a bank here, which was an SBA loan, and the SBA loan would loan on leased property where conventional loans would not. At the time of the economy changing in '07, '08, the SBA was a little stringent on who they would give money to. By doing our first phase on deeded land closer to street access and water and sewer, funding options are more available to us.
Thank you. My next question has to do with, you were here this morning, so my next question has to do with how long people get to stay there, how, what, what your thoughts are about the fact that the rules may change. You're, you're about to invest a bunch of money, put something in, and then the rules are being developed concurrently.
We are bound, we are bound by the rules under the plan development, not by the special use zoning that you are looking at currently.
Okay.
The, the rules built inside of our PD is what we have to go by, and those do mirror what your special use is, or are very similar to your special use currently.
Tell me about how long someone can park in the facility.
The current, it's currently written as stated this morning as an average of 30 days. And that being, you do have winter Texan people who will be here over 30 days. You have people who will be here one day. You have people who will be here a week. The ordinance is written to allow people to utilize a park. If you start putting such stringent restrictions on it, you, your funding will be restricted because there are, when you go into the funding side of this, the SBA in particular, when we did that last time, only a certain portion of the park could be spaces that were 30 days versus seven days. As an industry and for the conventions we have attended, there is lots of regulations within side of our industry that dictate how many. KOA is partially 30-day spaces, partially weekly spaces, partially daily spaces because of the way KOA structures their campgrounds as a corporation, not as a local entity.
Okay. Other questions for them?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
What concerns me is the, over the years, reasons have changed. When you first started out, your reasons were to be strictly a recreational use facility with horseback riding and so forth, and several of us on the council at that time were concerned about any type of contamination into the water since you'd have access down to the water on leased land from the city. This project, the plan development has been amended twice for changes to accommodate your request. One time, you said it was because of sicknesses and illnesses. When I called your hand on that, you know, it was, no, it was because of businesses that your person that estimated what it would take to do the project was considerably wrong, less than what it turned out to be, to progress. And then you changed, you came and wanted to put a mobile home unit on there strictly for purposes that you had stated, and the mobile home was allowed to be there until March 2011. And then you came back and wanted that amended, the mobile home to remain until March of 2016 if it were a campground RV park facility to use as an office. I'm confused from what you originally started and proposed to be, all of the different changes that are here, and now with the oil boom and the influx, I see it as trying to capture that cash cow right now. So I'm heavily inclined not to vote for this because of all of the different changes, and it just appears that we're just trying to tap into that cash cow market that's going on out there, and that would be detriment to the Century Terrace properties and the other businesses and stuff that are out there. That's just my opinion.
If we were held planning degrees, if we were engineers, maybe we would have done this right the first time. We are mere citizens working on a project as a small business to build something. Unfortunately, with that comes a learning curve. With that comes many changes. Yes, we had a huge medical condition in our family, which economically impacted us. The banks also were not lending money at the time. We tried to secure funding at the time, and then I fell ill and was out of work for many months, and the emotional rollercoaster that rides with it. You don't want to try to build something and go through that. So all of those yes are factors. But regardless, the question here is, the property is a good use for an RV park, and this change will allow us to move forward now, when we are in a strong economy where banks are lending money, when it makes sense to open a park when gas prices have somewhat stabilized in the economy and people are spending money traveling now where they were not back when we tried shortly after we started this last time.
I am concerned that with the problems that you've encountered and the changes that have been made, if something were to happen physically or financially, that there wouldn't be deep enough to withstand and keep it a viable business. So I'm, I have concerns.
And we recognize those concerns. We want to build an RV park.
My issue about the timing had to do with, because we're getting this other work done, I want, I was, you know, this is the amendment of something. It's not, in other words, you don't, we, we wouldn't have to pass this on under what was agreed to under 2007. If we chose not to pass it on, it would be bringing it back and maybe having to comply with the new rules. And, and that's why I'm trying to spend a little energy, and I'm rereading some stuff that I read last night. So are there any other questions for them? I just want to make sure. I want to make sure that whatever we do, understand this, I'm actually a proponent for you, but I want to make sure that we do this this way, and it's okay, and then the next time someone asks, the same kind of rules can apply, and the next time someone asks, and, because I want us to be able to say yes or no based on some set of guidelines that we all can, can, can live with as a community. I don't want some winners and some losers, and, and we don't even have a real idea why. Why did this person win and that person lost, or those kinds of things. And that's, so I was trying to understand a little bit what your timeline was, to know whether or not getting through the whole process hinders your success one way or the other.
We started meeting with staff in November, so don't, you know, we've already been working on this multiple months with staff.
Okay. Mr. Morrison.
I approved you back in 2007. I thought it was an excellent idea then, and I've not changed my mind today. I, I am interested. Are you ready to go?
Yes. We have to finish engineering because until you all approve us, we're not going to pay for engineering again like we did last time.
But everything is set up. If the engineering is there and the approval is there, it's giddy up.
Yes.
I don't have any problem with this.
The only question I have, Mayor, is, as long as you folks can promise me that there will be no, and I guess there can't be, any mobile homes involved in this area?
They are not allowed under the PD restrictions.
Right. I wanted to hear that.
Only the one for owner or management housing.
And then what is, I've heard the average length of stay is around 30 days. What is the average longest stay, or is there such a thing? There's not?
That depends. You have people currently at your current parks that are staying much longer than 30 days. I have friends who have stayed at KOA for over a year. So you currently have those situations in place, which are not causing the city issues. You're not having policing issues. Your campgrounds have typically management that live on-site, and by having someone live on-site and have, you know, that is controlled better. We have a mobile home park in the county, and nobody lives there, nobody's around to see it on a daily basis. Here, it's managed on a daily basis, and you have office hours. It is a different scenario than a mobile home park.
How many parking spaces are, I never did count them.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
In this amendment.
And you guys own all these others?
We own almost 75 acres, and it is.
Oh, I'm talking about the, the other mobile home parks? I mean.
No, 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 sir.
You're just, okay.
No. What we were doing, we were showing comparable areas.
And I, I applaud the effort of the Century Park. I had no idea there was issues there, you know. If I, I'm the council person for this area, if somebody would have let me know that there was issues, then, you know, I'm not saying to be totally different, but at least I'd certainly hear their concerns. But I was never contacted by anybody else, other than Ms. Rosser was trying to get with me to meet down there. I took it upon myself, and I've driven that every many times, and I saw what was out there. And really, I had, I had no issues with anything. No noise, no wild parties out there. I'm sure it's all going to be controlled, I would hope. But, but again, I have, I have no, no issue.
Thank you.
One building, two buildings, tourist cabin, swimming pool, other recreation, parking spaces, horse trailers and light trucks, parking spaces for short terms, stalls for horses. But I'm trying to find in here, it doesn't even necessarily say, and I need some help here. Does it, are they, they're under a plan development, but there's none of the language, for instance, about how long a trailer can be there in their plan development language. And so does the ordinance, with the average of 30 days, apply, or doesn't apply?
Correct you are in that fact that, I'll try to address your questions. Correct you are that the ordinance does not specify, you know, this, that, or like you said, there's no timely on the trailers. However, in the ordinance language at the top, it's the plan development district intended for a recreational vehicle park with tourist cabins and horse boarding. You would default back to that definition in the ordinance of the average 30 days under that case, but the, back in 2007, it was not specified.
It says, "Plan development district intended for a recreational vehicle park with tourist cabins and horse boarding."
Right. And then we do have in the zoning ordinance, the recreational vehicle park is defined, and that's where you'll find the, the average length of stay as 30 days.
Ms. Bowling.
I'm looking. I'm going to have to pull open the ordinance.
You guys, I'm very sorry for letting this drag on, but the fact is, I can't support it if, if they're not, if they're not required to comply with that ordinance, because this is wide open. The plan development district working stuff is wide open, and so I can't, I can't support just this. I've got to understand that they're going to have to comply with that ordinance.
Either, either the, it applies, in whatever case, if it does, then if we end up changing that ordinance, then it applies to them.
Still applies.
Right. The recreational vehicle, we would fall back into the general definition, or the general, the definition in the ordinance under chapter 12 defining the recreational vehicle park for those restrictions and requirements. And in those requirements.
So specifically answering Mayor's question.
Yes.
That applies to this PD.
That, yes.
The ordinance applies to this plan development.
Let me, I'm, as I said, I'm going to pull up the chapter so I can answer you very specifically. Thanks. Jeff, come here.
What's chapter 12?
An ordinance amending chapter 12 of the code.
As always, the traffic on Cristovalle Road has really concerned me, being right before the bridge.
What says it's applicable?
Yeah, they've got a entrance, front entrance and a back entrance.
See, it says it's applicable, regulations contained in chapter 12 of the code.
Thank you.
I don't know that there's a back entrance, Charlotte. I don't think there's a back entrance. I never saw a back entrance.
They used to be here in a mo.
Ms. Peggy, is there a back entrance?
Cristovalle Road as well as.
There's an emergency entrance that I saw.
We have an approach from TexDOT on Chadburn, not on Cristovalle Road. And that is intended as a secondary egress-ingress for the original PD as required by fire code. It is not intended as a main entrance to the facility.
So there's a strong possibility that if I bring in my RV and then I pull and bring my horse and trailer and pig and cow and roosters, that 30 days later, I might have to just haul everything out of there. There's a strong possibility, right? If they read it correctly.
I'm reading your plan development again, and I think, I, I think it says in section two of their plan development district agreement that in all other respects, I think that may be enough to be okay.
Just this definition.
I'm seeing it as an umbrella to everything else.
What is that? The definition really takes merging the, the definition under C of campground recreational vehicle to define what the characteristics of the recreational vehicle park are. However, the plan development district has its particular rules, and so it, it just would be interpreting, so, so go ahead. So here are these two. We've got the general definition, and we have the specific set of rules for this. So what, take me further with your.
Okay.
Right.
My position is that there's nothing in their plan development, planned development district document that restricts how long a, a, a recreational vehicle can be there. So if the ordinance doesn't govern an average of 30 days, and if that ordinance doesn't apply because they're in a planned development district, then there's no restriction on how long a recreational vehicle can be on their property, because the plan development district document doesn't have any of that. And I would be willing to.
That is a correct, that is a reasonable interpretation.
I would be willing to pull my motion and add that 30-day restriction or as a length of time that they can be there.
But you can't, because it's an amendment to an existing agreement. See, and that's why I'm saying it's, I, I mean, I can't support this, I don't think, because I don't think there's any restriction on how long an RV can be on their property. And I don't think that meets even the spirit of what we're trying to do. So I'd rather wait and make sure that they come back and apply. Ms. Rosser.
Ms. Peggy. When somebody goes out there and wants to camp out, they sign some kind of a, do they sign anything?
They register as a guest.
And does it say on there anywhere that it, hey, you just have a 30-day limit? Does it? No?
No?
No, they talked about winter Texans.
In two thousand and five, there was a research done by Michigan University on RV, people who visited the cities. It was found they spent a hundred and sixty dollars a day in the cities that they visited, driving Class A motorhomes, coming into our town and spending money, which in turn increases our sales tax revenues. That's what we're wanting to attract. We're building an RV park.
Okay.
Mayor, this might assist in looking at, um, the ordinance. Section two says that in all other respects, the property shall, shall be subject to the applicable, uh, regulations contained in chapter twelve.
Well, that's what we were just-
So that makes sense, right.
No, that's what Ken, that's what Mr. Hirschfeld and I were saying. What does chapter twelve say, then?
That would contain the restrictions, and those would include the thirty days.
Including the ordinance?
Right. Because indeed, there would be many other regulations that this district would have to comply with that would not be spelt out specifically.
But it's okay, but chapter twelve has the ordinance involving the thirty days of, and all that. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. She just answered for all I know that they didn't have to comply.
No, I mean, what's that? Is that?
Chapter twelve, Article three, section three one four.
Twelve three three.
She's reading.
Twelve three three.
Okay, so where are the thirty days?
Temporary quarters.
It's actually under temporary living quarters. Show me where that is.
Right.
Cam ground recreational vehicle parks are intended for camping, or recreational vehicles occupied as temporary living quarters, et cetera. And so Jeff is now telling me that the restriction of thirty days is under the temporary living quarter definition. Where is that?
You're gonna put that under three fourteen G.
Under three fourteen G.
In chapter twelve?
Yes, under chapter twelve.
Okay. I believe the planned development district does have reference to the ordinance, and that's what I was looking for, was for somebody to say it does. Okay?
Okay.
Outstanding. Uh, I'm ready to call for a vote on this. Is there any further input or question from council? Is there any further public input on this item? Okay, I'm gonna call for this vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I believe we have a five to one vote. Okay, let's move forward then to item number thirteen. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introduction of an ordinance amending chapter twelve, exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo. This is zoning item thirteen dash oh eight for Cho Walker, and a presentation from planner Jeff Hens.
Now I believe that even if you amended, it still applies to them. And so, so now I'm okay, but I couldn't get there from what I was reading.
This is Z thirteen oh eight. As you'd stated, this is a request for approval of a zone change from single-family residential or RS one to two-family residential RS two to allow for household living as allowed in RS two zoning districts at twelve oh five South Jackson Street. This is approximately seventy-five feet southwest from South Jackson Street and West Avenue H. Twenty notifications were sent for this particular request. Three were returned in opposition. Uh, you can see the subject property here, uh, within town. Live Oak Street runs through the top. Uh, you'll find Sherwood Way slash Beauregard up here. Uh, this is in the Santa Rita area. There's several of these type situations in this area already. Um, there is some RS two zoning in the area already, about five hundred feet away from this particular district. In this case, the request for RS two zoning is on two particular lots here, lots one and two of this block. An aerial photo shows that there's an existing accessory building on the back that the applicant is looking to turn that into an accessory apartment for, um, you know, the use of a relative to live in. It would be a full-service accessory apartment, so it would have a kitchen and a bathroom, which is, which is why this RS two zoning is required. Um, the ordinance does not allow for two houses on a single-family residential lot that are self-sufficient without RS two zoning. Uh, the vision plan map for the neighborhood is, for this area is calling for neighborhood indicated by the yellow here. These are the map, uh, this is a map showing where the notifications, uh, that you receive in your packet that were in opposition to this particular request were. Now, this is looking at the subject property in the front yard here from Jackson Street. This is the house here, and the accessory building is behind it there. Uh, this is looking at that, um, unit in the back from the backyard at the accessory structure. Um, planning staff recommended approving this zone change. The planning commission recommended approval of it by a six to zero vote at the March eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen meeting. On the basis for staff's recommendation, uh, many of these single-family properties do have accessory apartments in this area. In truth, you know, a whole analysis of the area probably should be done. There's several other properties that would likely, you know, benefit from this type of zoning, but, um, Ms. Walker here has come in and applied for that. I can go into more if you have any other questions, um, and explain our, um, recommendation a little bit more if you'd like.
Okay.
Questions for the gentleman?
Yes, I'd like them to flip the screen back so I could finish reading it really fast. Thank you.
Um, okay, so let me make sure I understand this. To have a garage apartment or whatever, it has to be RS two?
It, you can have, currently, you can have, um, I think it dates back to the eighties. They, they called them, it was in our ordinances, in the zoning ordinance, servants' quarters until up to the eighties. The language was servants' quarters, where you could have folks live. The difference, um, to make this an accessory apartment would be a full kitchen. Now, some folks will have like what you'd call a mother-in-law suite, where there's, maybe it's missing a bathroom or it's missing a kitchen, but that really is what differentiates them. Um, this particular applicant is looking to have a full kitchen and a full bathroom, which would make this a self, you know, self-sufficient unit, and that's why the RS two zoning is necessary.
Okay. And then, I guess the next thing is, uh, is this gonna be a new structure in the back?
No, it's an existing structure.
Just remodeling the structure that's already there.
Correct. It would legitimize and legalize a full service, you know, standalone apartment. I can go to the, um-
Go to the picture, aerial picture. There you go.
Yeah, it's an existing structure that the applicant is looking to remodel.
So it's basically just taking that and converting that into a residence?
A, a full residence that would stand alone and have a full bathroom and a full kitchen in it.
As opposed to a mother-in-law suite?
As opposed to a mother-in-law suite, which is missing one or the other.
Okay. Pop forward. There was something that said there are a couple of these RS twos in the immediate area?
Yeah, I'll have to, to back up, um, and, uh, Ms. Johnson had worked on that. And yet you'll find one in this area here is an RS two. There's several RS twos, you know, in the, in the area. There's another one over here as well. This map is, you know, going a little bit further. This one here is about five hundred feet away.
Okay. Thank you. Do y'all have questions for the gentleman or for the proponent? Okay, can I get a motion on this item?
I'm motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Mr. Hirschfeld, a second from Mr. Silves to approve as presented. Uh, any further questions? Public input on this item. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move forward then to item number fourteen. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing, or the introduction of an ordinance amending chapter twelve, exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances. This is zoning case thirteen dash oh nine, AKA PD oh seven dash oh three, two thousand and thirteen amendment concerning Jack Gabriel, and again, Jeff Hens.
Good afternoon. I hope you're not, uh, growing tired of me yet. Um, whoops. Z thirteen oh nine, this-
Tell us a Tony Romo story, and we'll let you stay up there for a little longer.
I did go to high school with him. He's now a rich man. I know I don't have access to his bank account, though. Sorry.
All right. Good, go ahead.
Um, Z thirteen oh nine, Jack Gabriel.
True story.
This is, uh, planned development oh seven oh three. Um, this is the two thousand and thirteen amendment. This would allow the, um, a gymnastics academy to be operated in an existing planned development zone, uh, which is approved at this time for an assisted living facility. And the applicant has come to us and sought to add gymnastics academy. This is at the old Travis School located at twenty-nine oh nine South A and M Avenue at the corner of South Oxford and South A and M Avenue. This is approximately an eight-acre property. Uh, twenty-one notices were sent, and one was returned in favor. Um, the background packet should have included that as well. This is just to familiarize you with the area. You can see it's in the center of town, just north of the Reta Royo. The aerial photo will do a much better job indicating that. You can see the Royo cuts through here. The school's been vacant for many years. Uh, the planned development that's approved on this property for assisted living, uh, back in two thousand and seven, has never materialized. Uh, the applicant hasn't sought to take that away, but just to add, you know, options to the property in terms of this. The vision plan map for the area is calling for neighborhood-type development. Um, and you can see here's where the one notification in favor came from. Now, looking south on A and M Avenue, you can see there's a, a playground with the school. Uh, this is the school here, the former Travis Elementary School. Looking west at the property, you can see, uh, it's been closed for some time. The sign is still there as well. Um, and this is the gymnasium where the gymnastics academy is gonna be utilized in the future here. And looking southwest again, you can see out to the Reta Royo as well. Uh, it's a pretty, you know, expansive area. This, this happens to be eight acres under private ownership.
Can I speak?
Could you?
Hang on, he's, well, I mean, do we wanna keep going? We-
Okay, you'd like to go ahead and-
See, I think, I can make a motion to approve.
And I can second.
And I'll just say that this is tumbleweed gymnastics, and it looks just like that Travis Elementary has come back alive and in session, and my grandma, three houses away, was notified. I said, hey, did you, you know, did you recognize what was going on? She had no idea that they were in trouble, got thrown out and having troubles. She said, it looks fine, it'll work, and it does. It works with the neighborhood. There's nobody in opposition.
Conditions.
It looks really good, and that's why I recommend approval.
I got it. I got the motion and the second. I do wanna see the conditions.
And then I have a comment.
Okay.
Under the draft ordinance, uh, it's got this, you know, the standard language, sections one and two. If you violate this, you're guilty of a misdemeanor. Um, section five is really where it gets into the uses, uh, and I'm sorry, there's no slide for this, but I'll read off the draft that was included in the packet. Um, the underlying zoning on this was already RS one with the, um, approved assisted living, but in terms of this, this property shall not allow any retail sales. We really didn't see the traffic network back there. You know, if someone wanted to run a store out of that, really wouldn't be appropriate. Uh, we did find that, um, retail sales for folks attending the academy or, you know, types of gymnastics, you know, leitards and things like that, that type of retail sales would be allowed under this. But inviting folks in to sell them, these types of, you know, it would not be allowed. Um, office space would be allowed with the gymnastics academy and for the assisted group living facility. There's, you know, conceivable need for some, some of these folks to have an office to run their business out of there, so that would be allowed under this as well, but only an office for the gymnastics academy. Uh, the applicant had come to us and only indicated they'd like to run a gymnastics academy. There's no other uses they'd like to do. Um, we've also built in an appeals project, uh, processed it. If someone, you know, comes and says we'd like to do, you know, X, Y, or Z there, if the planning manager's interpretation is not agreeable to, that could be appealed to our zoning board of adjustment for a final say. Um, we, we used the standard parking requirements that are required for gymnasiums and other types of things in other parts of town. That's included in this ordinance. Uh, then we went ahead and added in, uh, a change of occupancy is needed on the building. There is some permitting issues with, you know, the, the space hasn't been evaluated yet to see if it was safe or not yet, so a change of occupancy needs to occur before this use can move in there to ensure the building is safe, has a proper amount of bathrooms, that type of thing. And the last one is just that outdoor storage of materials would not be allowed on the site. Um, you know, given that it is near the neighborhood, this isn't a spot for folks to store things outside.
Okay. Motion and a second. Recognize Ms. Farmer.
Could you back up to the pictures, please? Up until this year, this was in my district. And for every since the school closed and the individuals bought this as a private property, the residents in the area, it's been one complaint after another. If it were mowing the weeds, uh, they changed the water lines and they jackhammered up a part of the cities, the part, the sidewalk, and the city went out and told them they had to replace or, you know, repair. Their idea to repair was to put a piece of plywood with two cinder blocks over each end, which people that walked on the sidewalks in the area tripped over or various things. Uh, if you'll back up to a little bit further on the pictures, you'll see some C containers as well as horse trailers, fifth-wheelers, six-wheelers, I mean, storage of all kinds of outside equipment, and has been a constant complaint of the people in the area for a number of years. Just wanted to add that in there. I don't have any problems with the gymnastic and the girls, the Texas tumbleweed. It's a great organization. I, I do have a problem with getting control over this property owner to adhere to the city ordinances with reference to keeping it clean, picked up, no outside storage of containers and, uh, extra horse trailers, et cetera, and so forth. If you'll go to the next picture, you'll, you'll see what I'm, uh, they, no, it's further back there, in, in the back right there, in full, full view, and over to the side will start the C containers. Uh, add that bit of history because it was in my district for a number of years.
I will say, um, in my first learning experiences with the city when I started a few months, um, you know, not a few months ago, but back when I started about two years ago, um, was this particular property. Um, finding out for myself and the ordinances in town here that, uh, C containers are not allowed in any residential district, which the underlying zoning of this is a residential district. Um, I can't speak for Code and Mr. Flores, but I have worked with Code in the past on this particular property regarding violations. Uh, it appears there may be more, so we'll certainly handle that and try to get that cleaned up, since that is a zoning violation with those types of things there.
It sure helps when they have a revenue source. Then they can actually fix things and pay for the mowing, and you gotta have a revenue source, and they've gotta be in business over here. So that'll help.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. I have a comment. I need, uh, to know if I have other, other comments from, from council? Questions? Okay?
I just wanna make sure, I'm reading through the PD, that, uh, the only thing that is allowed in these buildings via this PD is gymnastics academy and assisted group living, correct?
Correct.
All right. I just wanna make sure.
Changes to that.
And no retail sales, other than, uh, inside to the gymnastics showcases and/or events.
Right, like a concession stand or, you know, clothing for gymnastics. No invitation of, you know, no signs out front. We've got, you know, a concession stand.
Assisted living has never been developed?
Correct. It would still be allowed to, or this wouldn't take that away. It would leave that, the property a little more versatile in that regard. It would just, you know, add to it. We didn't find those uses would conflict.
So are we taking away RS one?
Can I resign?
RS one, it's still gonna be zoned, PD. Um, most PDs will have an underlying zoning, uh, at least the ones that I've had a chance to work on, just in case, you know, we'll try to get everything we can, but in case we've forgotten something, there needs to be a, a fallback of some type. Um, the last one didn't unfortunately, but it kinda did through the zoning ordinance, but, um, the, most of the ones you'll see that have been recent will have an underlying zoning of some kind. So the RS one, the property isn't actually zoned that, but if for some reason something was forgotten or left out, we would look at RS one regulations and that would apply.
Okay, I'm gonna call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No public comment?
Okay. It is, I did drop the ball that I did not allow public comment. And so would somebody like to come up and comment on this? I'll be glad to call for the vote again. Okay?
Cool.
Thank you, thanks, Ms. Farmer.
Is Jack or Landa here? Is Jack here? No, Landa, no? Okay.
Okay, fifteen, I have fifteen, and then we did sixteen and seventeen, I have a request that we take a little break, so. Okay, here we go for a small break and then we'll come back. And we'll be on item number fifteen.
Chinese black.
Okay, let's move on then to item number, do I have a quorum, one, two, three, I do. Move on to item number fifteen, this is the first public hearing in consideration of introduction of an ordinance related to zoning item thirteen dash ten, the Mills Development.
Good afternoon, this is my last item unless you have a random thing for me. This is Mills Development Incorporated, this is approval of a zone, a request for approval of a zone change from ranching estate to single-family residential. If you look back to that.
This is what we annexed recently?
This was annexed on March 5th, this is the property subject to that. By default, three thirteen B of the zoning ordinance, not three thirteen, three oh three A, I think it is, of the zoning ordinance, every newly annexed property into the city limits by default is zoned ranching estate, so this is them coming, you know, to get the type of zoning that they would like on their property.
Well then, can I make a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Hirschfield, I believe I heard Ms. Farmer as the second. And so, do we have questions on this item?
Thirty seconds, all you got.
Okay, do you want that at ten thousand feet or twenty thousand feet? Okay, outstanding. All right, I have a motion and a second to move forward on this item as nearly presented. Do I have any public comment on this item? Do I have any further comments from council? Let me call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you notice that after you told them about your relationship with Tony Romo, things are moving right along? Okay. Okay. Item number eighteen. This is the discussion of costs related to the Texas municipal retirement system, cost of living adjustment increase. And so it is a discussion item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We had talked previously about what it costs to change our TMRS benefits package from a fifty percent COLA benefit to a seventy percent. We had previously been on seventy percent. And as TMRS was revamping its actuarial assumptions, the rates were climbing and in an effort to stem that tide, we moved from a seventy percent COLA benefit to a fifty percent COLA benefit. I think all the participants would be in favor of moving to seventy percent at some point. Today would be okay, but that's not what's in front of you, but anytime in the future. But there is question about what it would take to do that. The answer is approximately one million dollars per year in additional payroll costs. And that covers all employees, all full-time employees, except for the fire department, which have their own pension system.
Mr. Mayor, I had asked Michael to bring this back for us to discuss because we had promised the retirees that we would look at it and after the first of the year, tell them what the conclusion was, that we more than likely could not act or approve on anything till budget time. But this is why I asked him to bring it back, so we could talk about what it actually would cost the city to do a change. And that's what I needed to know.
Okay, well, it's a discussion item, so I want to walk through some things. When you read through the information, it basically talks about a seven percent contribution by the employee and a fourteen percent contribution by the, by the city, but we're at nineteen percent, okay? And we've been up based on the actuarial problems and then a, an adoption by the council really in about two thousand and eight that, I remember when you discussed all those things, Mr. Dane, I wasn't here, I wasn't here, but I was out there. And is that kind of slowly moving back down from, or is it the same at the eighteen point nine three, or what is the, what is that?
It is roughly the same.
Okay.
And as, 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 as actual experience related to assumed experience occurs, whether we have better than assumed experience, that could bring the rate down, or if we have worse than assumed or projected experience, that would have a tendency to push the rates up. But right now, TMRS has advised us that we can expect approximately this rate for the foreseeable future. What has caused this elevated rate over an extended period is a fixed amortization of a liability which they determined to exist a few years back when they were going through this issue. At one point, we talked about our contrib, the city's contribution rate being nineteen percent. At one point, we were looking at the possibility of a contribution rate between twenty-four and twenty-seven percent for that benefits package. And so TMRS made some changes at the state level, some statutory changes, which helped bring that rate down. And on our side, we were active in that we began to bring that benefit level down. We didn't feel like rates that high were sustainable over the long haul.
Also, yes, sir, also, the employee part, though, at seven percent has stayed the same, right?
Yes, sir, and that is by statute not a variable type item.
Okay, and so, there you go, that's where I was headed. And so I was wondering if, if there was an ability for the council to say, we'd like the employees to go to nine percent and we'll go, instead of from nineteen to twenty-two, we'll go to twenty-one, or whatever, but you said just then that that is not a variable.
That's, that's true, and I probably should clarify. I think if this council, for example, in setting pay benchmarks, what do we want to pay compared to other cities, cities we view as comparable? We might set that benchmark artificially low by whatever we feel like employees should contribute to TMRS. For example, if we were going to pay dollar for dollar what a comparable city would pay, instead of paying an employee a hundred dollars, we might say, well, we're going to pay you ninety-eight, the other two is going to go as your contribution to TMRS. So there are ways, while formally, employees don't contribute more than seven percent, to the extent that that overage we pay, that the city pays for TMRS affects what is available to pay an employee, then to that extent, employees are paying more.
I was, I was going to see how that could be parsed, is it related to someone that's sixty-five years or older and is a retired employee and some, you know what I'm saying? I was, someone that's a brand-new employee comes in at a different, in a different position than somebody that's been here for a while. And so that's what I was about to start pursuing, was could you treat different people differently, but raise the rate on some and so forth to do this together? But the answer is not really.
That, that's true, in fact, not at all, because those rules are set at the state level, and that is not a feature that is allowed in those rules. TMRS wrestled with this, I'm on an advisory committee which is charged with researching and contemplating issues for the board, and the number one issue was how to deal with COLA. There are cities out there that never had it, that feel they should have it. There are cities out there like us who had it at the seventy percent level and either did away with it or reduced it and would like to get back where they were. But the cost is very high. And so, in addition to that, the way the computation is outlined in the state statutes, the move we took, which appears to be a very prudent move on the surface, disproportionately affects retirees based on how long they've been retired. The people who need the COLA adjustment the most are hurt the most by these kind of actions.
No ability to be variable in that.
That's correct, there's no variability there also. And so, that was one of the things the advisory committee looked into, was what should we do? And we gave the board some options. And one of the options was to do nothing, to simply, TMRS relative to other state-level systems is in, in good shape. And, but there is a concerted effort by groups out there to attack systems which are not simply cash-based. TMRS is a hybrid system with a, an element of defined benefit and an element of cash basis or defined contribution. So it is considered a hybrid system. But there are systems out there that are in difficulty, particularly in other states that we see in the newspaper. But there are systems in Texas which are not as good a shape as TMRS, and they may be targeted for legislative proposals. And I think the TMRS board's position this year was to take no action on making COLA changes this year, but simply to, to try to educate citizens, taxpayers, and legislators that TMRS is in relatively good shape compared to these others. So as far as TMRS being advocates for legislation, that's not happening this year. So, I'm sorry, Mayor, in summary, the flexibility that you would want to consider as potential solutions just is not there at this point.
Is there, is it circumventing that, or is it a problem if you wanted to give a stipend to certain people without including everybody? Seems like that's probably considered circumventing the process.
Well, we would do that outside of the TMRS system. And what we would have to determine through some assistance from legal would be, under what conditions are we able to pay people who don't work for us and who have not provided service or goods to us? And we would need to, that'd be a question we would pose to legal.
I bring that up for folks on council to consider as a way of helping somebody where you, where you might leave the fifty percent COLA level, but try to look at a way where you felt like if there was a subgroup you really wanted to help, maybe you would look for a way to stipend that subgroup instead of helping everybody. Here and there, I just.
Well, but that does make some sense, because then you're directly targeting, putting your finger right on the problem.
Those people who were hurt the most, maybe you go, look, how do we fix their problem without spending a million bucks on everybody?
Exactly.
And so, you know, that's what I was looking for, is how do you spend two hundred thousand dollars fixing the problem?
Well, is it, is it the ones that have been retired a certain number of years, or what is that?
It is, in general, it is the longer you've been retired, the longer it will be before you get a, an addition, a COLA adjustment, an upward adjustment of your annuity under this situation.
And that's sad, I mean, those guys, you know.
It is rooted in the method of calculation that is in the state statutes which enable that COLA. And that was at the heart of the discussion is, should we allow cities to, should we be advocates for legislation which would allow cities to give one-time COLAs? The problem is, if I pledge to pay an individual one dollar more per year than I've set aside for them, it doesn't just cost me a dollar, it costs me a dollar every year, and there's a present value impact of that.
You bet.
And so, TMR, the board chose not to move ahead with those, but certainly the COLA discussion is not going to go away. And I would think from our standpoint, some kind of a targeted approach might be the best way in the short term. In the long term, though, which is very much the view you want for managing a pension, I mean, you got to manage this year's expense, but you also want to set goals, what is it we want our benefit to be related to pensions? And to that end, I would suggest that if council wants something different, or at least wants to be considered, our level of pay and benefits, then probably you should direct staff to make it something that we, make it a priority. Not necessarily that an out, particular outcome is a priority, but that it be studied. And so, where we ended last time was that we would, this would come up in our strategic planning discussions, but it never came up, we were very much focused on those other priorities, and we didn't get to the level where we were managing the organization. So if you want to direct staff to put it on that, to, on that list, now would be a great time.
You know, there's certainly a group here, for me, nineteen percent is as big a number as I'm willing to swallow, so. But anyway, that's up to the group, what kind of consensus there is and what you want to tell them. I wish, I want you to find a way to pinpoint those people who are harmed the most and, and spend some money against those people. That's what I would like to see us do. So there's a group of people that have been retired that, that this impacts in an inordinate way, and I'd like to figure out how to, how to focus on that group of people and try to help them.
An alternative might be to impact those folks through the insurance rates.
Right, and so, yeah, and so you provide something that's a benefit over here to offset the fact that you're not getting everything you might have over there. Anyway, that's my own opinion, is that we ought to be trying to fix the problem, not, not increase the overall expense myself. You're going to have some real challenges because of streets and because of a police department building and because of, et cetera, and so it's just going to be hard to do, to be all things to all people. So nineteen percent, when you're supposed to be spending fourteen percent for me, is all of the bite that I would take. But that's, I'm not, you know, I'm not the only one here, so. Anything else we want to tell them while we're in discussion?
Remind me again how many people we have under the retirement system now, we, the city, how many people are out there?
Be approximately, well, how many employees we have under this system?
How many retired, retired employees do we have out there?
I think we have in the neighborhood of eight hundred retirees. I think we have approximately four hundred. I don't know that, Lisa would know that.
Three hundred thousand for every one percent increase.
Pardon me?
Three hundred thousand dollars for every one percent increase, more or less?
Approximately, that's true.
Eight hundred retirees, geez.
We're a city which has been established for a long period of time. Newer cities, like smaller cities in the metroplex, which haven't been around long, have had fewer issues with this because they simply haven't had long-term employees. But the city of San Angelo has been in existence and a member of TMRS for a long period of time, and so, we have, we're a mature city from that standpoint.
I understand the hardships and the heartaches that we go through each year at budget time, but I also understand the hardships that the retirees go through when they see less and less brought home to feed their family or pay their electric bills. And for retirees that are truly retired, they're not working at another job, that that's their only source of income, I would like to see between now and budget if you and Daniel and maybe a council member could really work on a proposal to, we can't do this until January of next year, is that correct? We can't put it into place, a COLA change for it to be effective to that retiree till January one of the following year.
I think you're right.
I think that is correct, so it's something that, we've worked on it, we found out what it's going to cost this, but what we can recommend and how we can pay for an increase in the budget.
Again, remember, that's what it costs you to, to impact every employee and every retiree. So a way of making the bite smaller is just affecting a subgroup, just the retirees. Or anyway, I just give you that to think about.
That's, that's what I would like to do, if, if Daniel could find a way in our budget process to pay for this, but Daniel and Michael. But I want to give them something with this outgoing council, we, you know, we've been working on this and this is there and this is what we now know that it will cost, and if something could be brought in and put in place and recommended when we're at budgets.
Now, something for you to consider is that there are retirees who received an adjustment, but they didn't receive the adjustment they would have received if we'd been at the seventy percent. So they received a smaller adjustment. So we have really a population of retirees, and then we have subgroups who are affected at different levels.
Right.
And I would approach this.
This is a very complicated process.
Probably with those affected the greatest would be first in line for some sort of an adjustment or assistance, sorry.
Mr. Morrison?
And I would also ask to echo what Charlotte has said. And if we can't give them any more, if we, I would like to tie it in with the insurance. If we can, if we can't give them an increase in their, in their monthly salary, if we could take an amount off of what we charge them in insurance, that all balances out. I would like for y'all also to look at this very, very closely, and let's see if we can get some relief, especially for these that's been retired for some time and under a different economic situation.
Well, I think that was an idea you thought of a while ago, and I think that might have real merit. So that'd be something for you guys to pursue as a way to go after a fix. Is there anything else before I ask for public comment?
For those who don't have insurance, take the insurance.
I think, I think that's, that's an interesting thought and interesting idea, and that I've, I've got concerns on how that particular idea can pull together and actually work and be legal.
Okay.
I've got real concerns on that, but I'm not trying to tell you it won't work, I just
Okay.
Have concern.
Sometimes legality, we do take into account.
Sometimes that creates a real roadblock, doesn't it?
It does. It interferes with creativity on a frequent basis.
Public input?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I appreciate y'all bringing this to the forefront. I'm Russell Smith, retired police chief. Several, some time ago, when the checks started coming out and TMRS notified people, I received notice that a two thousand and three employee had received a pay raise, and I received that notice from somebody that had not, who was older, been retired longer, didn't work under a competitive pay plan. And to me, that's the one thing that is hard for y'all to understand, because most of you weren't here. The city didn't pay anything competitive back during the time of these other employees, so their retirement benefit is already forty to fifty percent below what it would have been if it'd been competitive to the cities that you, or, you know, you compare yourselves against now. So you've got people getting raises that have just recently retired, but these people that are making these real low annuities aren't getting any adjustment at all. And the question that I had for you then and I have for you now, even though I understand the deal with TMRS, I have been through an educational process on that twenty years ago, actually, it was nineteen eighty-one, so it's been a while. But is it fair? Is it fair that you pay employees a competitive pay raise and now the retirement system is, and y'all are giving them raises to their recent deal, but the ones that are hurt the most and have been hurt dramatically, again, not only by this, but by the healthcare? And many of us, losing the pharmacy really hurts us too, but, but is it fair? So I know about the money and I understand it, I understand that. And I hope you can look to one of these. look to one of these other solutions. I did ask someone over 65 what their insurance cost is, $16, whatever it is that they're paying a month, and that is the only cost they have on the insurance. But remember before, we didn't have any, and all that's been added and has hurt the retirees, especially these older retirees that are now asking, "Why are, why do they get raises and we don't?" They don't, and I understand the big picture, I don't like it, but anyway, and I appreciate Ms. Farmer for bringing this up. So thank y'all. I mean, I've been here before, y'all, y'all know where I'm at, so, without a doubt, so, anyway.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay, Mr. Dane, it was a discussion item, I'm going to move us to the next item. This is a discussion on amending the ordinance related to growth restrictions concerning weeds and vegetation, and we have a request from our council member Farmer and a presentation by our code compliance manager, Mr. Flores. Ms. Farmer, would you like to carry the day, please?
Yes, this brings me back to the time when Shane was speaking before us and telling us that we were granting them not to have to mow, and I had a knee-jerk reaction, you know, what's good for the gander is good for the goose. If the city's going to be exempt, why are we making our commercial builders out there, the ones who are helping this city, paying taxes to this city and making it grow, why are they being penalized when the city's getting a free ride? So I went to Daniel about it, talked to him, and got with James Flores, and had several meetings with some of the builders representing. And with reference to an area of 10 acres or more, I had a particular person in my district that his mowing bill for the month, for, I forget the number of acreage, but his mowing bill was $88,000, and I had a heart attack. I mean, that's, that's a lot of acreage, and that's a lot of mowing in an area that was once cleared 10, 15 years ago, there had not been any development. We've been in a decline area, and I just cannot see penalizing any business owner to make them mow and keep up. Now, I'm not saying let it go, but when we're in stormwater conservation and we have learned that letting some of that grass grow helps prevent runoff, that I felt like it was time that we relooked at the amendment that required builders to mow to that excess and asked James to meet with them, and that's been done, and I'll turn it back over to James.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Staff. As Councilman Farmer stated, we did work on this start late October into November, and we basically just had a couple of meetings of opinion gathering, I guess. The ordinance was already established, and obviously we were enforcing it as written, so we got, we gathered tons of information, different opinions, and we kind of come to a conclusion where I think we left 95, 98 percent of the original ordinance intact, added an affirmative defense to this particular issue without circumventing the intent of the ordinance. And what I mean by that is, we decided to add affirmative defense of 10 acres or more, that would be an exemption to this having to mow, with the exception of being able to cut, or having to cut 100 feet from the nearest structure or 15 feet from the curb. And we went 10 acres because in our northern districts, there is five acre, six acre tracts that people live on that we felt, you know, are manageable and should be maintained, or a butt right up next to a bona fide RS1 district. So again, I think the, what we did, the conclusionary of that meeting was to add the amendment to the current ordinance, and it specifically states, "Any tract or parcel of land that is 10 acres or more, whether or not previously disturbed from its vegetative state, can be allowed to go back to its original state, so be in the grass weeds or 15 feet from the curb and 100 feet from the nearest structure." Again, today, if you go by a 50-acre tract and you clear it because you have these big hopes of doing something with it, and then something doesn't happen, you have to maintain that 50-acre tract. Under the proposed affirmative defense for that type of situation, you would be allowed to let it go back to its vegetative state, so be in your 100 feet off the nearest structure. Structure can be a fence, it could be an accessory building. A lot of discussion came out of what a structure was, is rather comical, but anyway, a fence is a structure and/or 15 feet off the curb. So again, I think with this, with this proposal, we, we kept the ordinance intact, we kept the integrity and intent of the ordinance, and we allowed affirmative defense that makes sense for people that have 10 acres or more tracts of land.
Okay, questions for him? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as requested.
Second.
Motion and second to approve is presented. Any further questions from council? Okay, public comment on this item? Call for this vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes, let's move on to item number 21. This is consideration of approving various board nominations by council and designated council members. Go ahead, sir.
Johnny wanted to see tabled 21B.
Okay, and we're tabling 21B, so we're only voting on 21A. This is the Design and Historic Review Commission.
Motion to approve 21A.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on 21A on Mr. Smith. Any other input? Call for that vote, all for those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 22, consideration of approving a civil service commission nomination for Keith Hidalgo by the city manager.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this nomination. Any questions or comments? Okay, call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items? I have, I have a desire to be informed on any progress we've made on the reclamation of water. There's, you remember that we talked about using treated water, trying to get it to the Texas Sports Bank complex possibly, and looking at options for it, and I'd like an update on what's being done, has been done, is it, has it dropped off the radar screen, what's going on with it on reclaimed water? And so I need to know what's going on there. Any other items, folks?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
I would like a item with reference to the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago with the Lake Nazworthy folks, with reference to the leases and the determination. I had asked Michael to get me the factor of that calculation, so maybe he and I and Alicia could review it and make a recommendation to council with references to, if anything should be done, to amend that proposal of the purchase, the percentage if they had not proposed it, and I would like... Oh, not on, hmm, okay. I would like for that to get rolling, since it's been a couple of months since we met with those folks. When I say "we," I'm talking of myself, the mayor, and Mr. Alexander. Also, about nine months or so ago, we met, meaning we, Mr. Hirschfield, and Rick, I believe, with some firemen about a proposal, a plan that they had come up with with reference to salaries and whatnot, and that's been about nine months ago, and we truly, in all fairness, should get back on and follow up on, and I would like something of a permanent committee or whatnot to look at that and get that looked at before July rolls around, that when we're ready for budget time.
And just as an update, we've had some meetings on that and currently one last week even, so we haven't been...
I really need that settled. Also, I have not been comfortable with, and it's not too late, I really would like to revisit the issue of our Hickory Water D radium plant. I am more and more uncomfortable with that particular building or process being right here in the city limits and so close to our river, our water source, and the possibility of having that building located outside the city limits on some city land is more favorable to me than it going in after Mr., the gentleman spoke with us last council meeting, I'm uncomfortable with it, Patch, thank you. I'm just uncomfortable with that, I really would like to revisit it. I'm still not crazy totally 100 percent of the Hickory water source, other sources may or may not be out there, I know that we've been looking at other places, and I want to talk about that and get the ball moving and not just concentrate on the Hickory. I think our citizens are due more information and more choices out there, and I want to bring it to the table and talk about it. I'm going to quote the mayor as he just earlier self, "They won't be dealt with unless they're brought to the table and talked about." So, gotcha.
Well, that's all right.
That's okay, but I really would like to talk about those, and I also would like to request that if I could be assigned with a committee to work with, maybe Ms. Bowlin and one other, with reference to our boards, our various boards and their bylaws, some of them don't even have bylaws. And I think that's a dangerous territory, and I would like for us to get working on that. One in particular that doesn't have any bylaws, or some recent, maybe boards that were organized or maybe combined, and they don't have any set of bylaws. But I would like to work with her and get something going on that. And also, the language that we talked about when we went back from drought stage three and dropped all the way to drought stage one has never been done, we've never looked at that and talked at it, and I would like to be publicly made responsible to work with Ms. Bowlin and get the rewriting of that language and brought to and before council in a quick manner. We, just some lacking things out there that we've not done. And then I've had some phone calls and requests about reference to the unsafety out at South Chadburn and Cristoval Road, how dark it is out there, no lighting, and possibly what it would take or get done to get some lighting out there. I asked about three years ago that we have lighting all the way to the airport on Knickerbocker Road, and was told it was something that engineering would look at, never came back, never looked at it, one of those never, never, that I felt like I was ignored, and to me it's a safety issue, I know it's a cost issue as well, but citizen requested that we look for possible lights in Mr. Silva's district there on Chadburn and Cristoval Road, because it's high rate of speed area. Oh, what else? Isn't that enough, Charlotte?
That was enough, that was enough for a couple of meetings.
Oh, well, okay. This is what happens when you can't walk or drive.
Exactly.
And you have to lay in bed or sit around and read and think of all kinds of things to do, so y'all please pray for me that I get back on my feet real soon.
I think we all do.
We need to pray for us, right?
But I would like to see that those things get done before our May changing of the guards, as I call it. It may not get completed, but at least it would be in more process than it is right now.
Okay.
I'll shut up.
I got one.
Okay, Mr. Hirschfield?
Speaking of the boards and commissions I'd like to have on the next agenda, I'd like for Alicia to have, to get an update on the status of boards and attendance, not making quorums. We need to, we need to hit that front and center, because that's, that truly is unacceptable, and we need to bring that front and center.
Okay, others?
I've got a couple of things that have been brought to my attention that...
Okay, Mr. Silva's?
Along the river, there are some dead trees, and are they going to be cut down? And also, there's one big stump out there, it's a tree that was broken, and there's nothing but spikes sticking out along, right there adjacent to Santa Fe Park. There's nothing but spikes. The other thing is, I'm very, still very much interested in even having Shane Kelton or myself be in touch again with Tracy Kane at Tech Stock, because I'm still interested in wanting to clean up that Loop 306 entrances, exits, you know...
It's bad.
It is bad, and so if you want to put a bug in Tracy's ear, and let me know, I'd love to, he said he was going to talk to some folks about it, and I have yet to hear back from him, Shane, so if you could help me out, I'm still very much interested, because there's folks out there that are wanting to help out, groups. Thank you.
Others?
I have just one more thing, I was looking at the list here, can't, can't, don't cut me off yet. In visiting with a citizen here, and I believe Michael was there when I was talking to him, there's a piece of land that sits just to the west of the Christian Village and just behind the old Safeway Building, which is the Big Lots, Old Big Lots now. But that piece of land, it's got that drainage ditch down between it. The Christian Village has missed two, three sales of being able to sell that land because of that drainage ditch, and it's curative state, and who's going to cure it? Clinton Bailey, I believe, looked at and couldn't find any record of how it came to be, and I vaguely remember some stuff, but I really would like for engineering to look at that and bring it back and see what resolution that we can do. And Michael, you know, because you were there on that conversation.
Yes, ma'am, Clint prepared a memo for me, and I just forwarded copies, asked for copies to be forwarded to you and to that citizen. And if you get that and you'd like some more follow-up, we're certainly available.
Yeah, that's one of those that used to be in my district, and now it's in his.
So we can hold him responsible for that now?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if Mr. Valenzuela could give us an update, please, on how the water department opened that Saturday to address problems, I've not heard any reports as to how it went, or are we having more days, or?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Boy, I've used that microphone for a long time.
Okay, others?
I'd just like to point out that I didn't say one thing.
How could you?
Motion to adjourn. Second. Now, what was I seconding that he didn't? I'm not even going there, Paul.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, we're adjourned.